All right, perfect. So I'm gonna call a meeting to order seeing that I have all of you guys here now. Okay, so, hold on. So calling the work session to order today, April nineteen at seven oh two P M. I'll start with roll call. Luke Cheswick.
Here.
Jimmy Tarlo.
Yeah.
Uh, Jared Stoffus.
Here.
And myself here. Uh, we have a complete quorum. Um, number item two on the agenda, review agenda. Um, can you do a read through including the time limits for each of the items, please? For um, the work session agenda?
Is that to me, uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, one court order, two review of agenda, five minutes. Three Mount Rainier Neighborhood Conservation Overlay Zone briefing by uh, Park and Planning, twenty minutes. Four Spring Park, thirty minutes. Five Aqua Discussion Update, number fourteen, twenty minutes. Six Resolution for Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, ten minutes. Seven Presentation of April fifth, uh, Public Hearing and Budget Discussion on April fifth Legislative Meeting Minutes, five minutes adjournment.
Thank you so much, Council. You have the work session agenda in front of you. Is there any changes to this agenda? If not, please uh, let me know so we can move to approve as presented.
I moved to adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, is there any objections? On moving, we don't have to vote on the agenda, but we review it. It's a work session, but seeing that there is nobody raising their hand saying they need any edits on it, we'll move forward with the agenda. Okay? All right, you guys look happy. So, all right, moving on to item number three, Mount Rainier Neighborhood Conservation N C O Z. Overlay Zone Briefing by N N C slash P P C. Uh, Mayor Council received a briefing for the Mount Rainier Neighborhood Conservation N C O Z Overlay Zone by N M N C P P C. Um, Daniel Sam, um, I know this see Daniel here. Hi, Daniel. It's always a pleasure to have you here.
Hi, Benitez. Uh, City Council members, my pleasure.
Thank you, Daniel.
I I know there's been a lot of work being put in this document and and years and effort on it, and we're happy to see you here. And we invited you today to make sure we get a run through of what it looks like and also to inform our community of um, what to expect and what is in it. So I'm gonna open up the floor to you without um, you know, no any any other ado, and then we'll open it to Council if they have any questions and then to the community.
Absolutely. May I share my screen?
Yes. Uh, Melissa or Jared, whoever has the platform, please go ahead and um, allow Daniel to share the screen.
Let's see. All right. Gonna share a PowerPoint I have here. Can you see that?
Yes.
Great. This is, I'm Daniel Sam with the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. Sending this briefing on the new Mount Rainier Neighborhood Conservation Overlay Zone Standards. And a little, we'll start with a little bit of history, which we've gone over before. Now we're a little further along. Uh, as many of us know, um, back in two thousand and one was when the Architectural Conservation Overlay Zone uh, legislation was adopted. Um, and it wasn't ever used, but the ground, uh, you know, in the mid two thousands, Mount Rainier started discussing uh, some efforts to maintain the character of their neighborhoods with some uh, work sessions such as managing future development and Mount Rainier Special Place, two thousand and six, two thousand and eight. Uh, the A C O Z, the Architectural Conservation Overlay Zone was made workable in about twenty twelve when they removed the requirement for a detailed site plan, which would have been uh, kind of an insurmountable thing for for homeowner to do. Uh, and at that time, a little bit later in twenty fourteen, Park and Planning began uh, the Architectural Conservation Overlay Zone Project, which included a new zone and inventory of the residents, residential structures that were there, design standards and a pattern book. And about the same time, the zoning rewrite began, the zoning rewrite for the entire county. And the A C O Z continued in twenty fifteen with community meetings and crafting the standards. Uh, the Architectural Conservation Overlay Zone Public Hearing at City Council. And then as part of the zoning rewrite, uh, that zone was actually deleted. So we couldn't work with that anymore, and the consultant went forward with the pattern book. It was decided at that time that another zone, the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay Zone would replace the Architectural Conservation Overlay Zone. Uh, in twenty seventeen, those, the first draft of those Neighborhood Conservation Overlay Zone standards were drafted. Uh, and then it was paused a little bit, uh, while they completed the rewrite. The pattern book was published in twenty eighteen. In twenty nineteen, we resumed work on the neighborhood's conservation overlay zone. We had the draft standards by early twenty twenty. Uh, the study for Mount Rainier, which is a requirement of this new zone, was published, was approved. Uh, then twenty twenty one, we're moving fast here, the countywide map amendment of the new zoning ordinance was approved. That included the neighborhood conservation overlay zones. And then finally here April first, twenty twenty two, the neighborhood conservation overlay zone and the zoning ordinance took effect. That's quite a journey, over twenty years. So what I'm gonna do tonight is go over these standards briefly. I hope I won't take up too much time here. Let me know if I'm if I'm uh, taking up too much. And uh, then as Mayor Benitez, we can said, we can talk about some things. Um, the standards, the overlay zone standards are found in the zoning code itself, uh, right here, um, section twenty seven, forty four oh three A five B. Uh, the purpose, I won't read the entire thing, but it's basically to preserve the character of the residential neighborhoods uh, in the R fifty five, uh, R S F sixty five rather, and a couple of other zones surrounding the downtown core, the the L M U T C zone. And uh, here we go. Here's a map that shows um, the boundaries of the the N C O zone are identified on the official zoning map. We have this map on our N C O Z web pages, so you can zoom in a little closer at your leisure. But it shows in the yellow here where the N C O Z overlays these residential areas. And the holes you see are are zones that are not R S F sixty five residential six residential single family sixty five and residential single family attached. So for example, here you see the L M U T C zone. Right away, these zone standards identify development that is prohibited. And that includes the enclosure of existing front porches, wraparound porches by any method other than screening and the enclosure of existing carports. And our friend here is reminding us that those are prohibited. The following development uh, is also exempt from the standards of the Mount Rainier Neighborhood Conservation Overlay Zone. That's a property that is listed as a historic site, historic resource, or historic district. Of course, those are regulated by subtitle twenty nine, whereas the zoning ordinance is subtitle twenty seven. Also excluded from the zone regulations are non-residential development that's otherwise permitted in the underlying zone such as churches. That we see here that are not Rainier. Routine repair and maintenance as defined in the zoning code is also exempt. These are activities that don't require a building permit that are associated with regular maintenance or general upkeep. And a little further, any alteration or renovation to a principal structure that does not increase the height or expand the footprint of the existing structure is also exempt. So in this uh, example here from the Mount Rainier Pattern Book, such things as replacing windows or doors, simple things like that. They aren't subject to the zone standards. And again, any alteration or renovation to an existing residential accessory structure that complies with the regulations of the zone standards is exempt, or construction of a new accessory structure that complies with the regulations is also exempt from the zone standards. This section identifies the principal use types that are subject to the zone dwelling, a single family dwelling, two family dwelling, a three family dwelling, and townhouses. Those are the four types that are subject to the zone regulation standards. And then we go into the development standards themselves. Uh, starting with the subheading for siding, massing, and composition. With some images here from the twenty eighteen Mount Rainier Pattern Book. Right off the bat, we have new street facing attached garages are prohibited. This is a reuse of an image that is in that pattern book showing the renovation of a house, but it shows how a garage was added to the front. And this is uh, actually prohibited in the N C O zone. Front setbacks for all new dwellings are must be located in accordance with another section. This is a lot to take in here. Uh, which speaks to the reduction of minimum front setbacks to block face average. So you know, briefly and simply, that your setback for a new dwelling which might be located here is going to be aligned with the dwellings that are already on the street front. That's what the zone standards dictate. So it couldn't be, let me go back a second. You know, you wouldn't place it all the way back on the lot or all the way in the front. So it's about getting a a regular street line. And the maximum area of impervious surface in the front yard cannot exceed twenty percent of that front yard area. And under no circumstance may uh, can you have a parking area in front of a dwelling as shown here, another image from the Mount Rainier Pattern Book. The maximum driveway width cannot exceed twelve feet. Have a driveway here which may be more than twelve feet. Obviously not at Mount Rainier. Uh, lead walks uh, from the street to the front door uh, cannot exceed four feet in width. Show here a sidewalk approximately four feet in width. And additions must be subordinate to the dwelling in massing and height. So here, with a drawing from the Mount Rainier Pattern Book showing a, showing an addition that is both subordinate, that is subordinate to the dwelling in both massing and height. Front additions that increase the gross floor area of the dwelling are not allowed, except for an open covered front porch as shown here in these Mount Rainier dwellings. And additions shall not exceed the height of an existing dwelling. Uh, any addition located on the side has to be set back a minimum of two feet from the plane of the front facade. This image from the pattern book shows a, this is probably set back not quite two feet, but it gives a general idea that additions are set back and subordinate. And subsection design, roofs and dormers and other subsection. The pitch of roofs visible from a public right of way has to be within a range of six twelve and twelve twelve. So anything steeper than that or shallower than that, which isn't even shown, is not permitted. And these drawings from the pattern book show approximately what those pitches look like. Dwelling types common in Mount Rainier. An expansion of an existing dormer or construction of a new dormer that's visible from a public right of way. This is a little complicated. It has to have a combined face of no more than thirty percent of the first story, the front facade, measured from the sill plate, the dormer, to the roof ridge of the dormer. So showing here an image of a dormer that possibly would not meet that standard today, a large distinctive roof and eve elements such as brackets here, or finials, it's not really a finial, it's more of a bracket two, has to be maintained or reconstructed in kind. Some Mount Rainier images shown here. And the main uh, rude ridge roof line can be raised to permit additional habitable space provided that, except on the rear of the structure. The roof, eve's height is retained. This is a little complicated. Uh, we're really gonna need down the road probably a drawing to show this. But basically there, you can raise that roof, but you have to keep it the same uh, where it's facing the street. And then for sheds child dormers, which are dormers that uh, just have a shed roof rather than a a gable roof. The the roof pitch to the dormers has to be ex- rather, except for shed style dormers, the the roof pitch dormers on the roof above a front facade has to be again, within that range of six twelve and twelve twelve. And here we have a drawing of a Mount Rainier bungalow with a with a slope of six twelve. Dormers shall not exceed the height of the main ridge roof line. And here's a drawing that shows a dormer that kind of goes over, kind of goes over the main ridge roof line, which is now prohibited by the N C O Z standards. Cladding, another subsection. Original sidewall treatments uh, shall be retained, renewed. For example, original shingles should not be covered with siding, vice versa. We saw some novelty shingles here and some gables, some sidewall treatments here to do revival.
Like that house on the left. That's all right.
Of course you do. There was no cat in front of it, so you lucked out.
We hope you're you're keeping those novelty shingles.
Yes.
Great. Uh, form stone, manufactured brick veneer, tile veneer, asphalt chinks, tar paper, plywood siding are all treatments that are prohibited as cladding materials going forward. And here's an example from the pattern book of a kind of form stone. Height. Uh, generally, the height of uh, new additions or new structures shall be compatible with other structures on the same block, but shall not exceed thirty five feet. So here we have, I think this is Date Street, which is
That's Varn, well, it used to be called Bates. That's the thirty four hundred block of Varn, thirty three hundred block of Varnum Street. Doesn't look like that anymore because of all the trees.
Right. So this is a historic photo from the Library of Congress, but it shows that the houses are rather uniform and compatible in height, which is the intent of this standard. Windows and doors. Some more drawings from the pattern book. Each level of the front facade of the main dwelling uh, needs to have at least two windows, except the first level where an entry door may be paired with a single window. Don't really have an example here. Uh, and the roof where there may be a single dormer window. So altering the style, changing the type, or reducing the size of removing any windows on the front facade prohibited unless the original features of the style of the building is being restored or maintained. So for example, well, I don't know if I should interpret the but you you have a couple of paired windows here, which perhaps in the permit review process would not be permitted to be altered to a large single window. Perhaps, as an example. Distinctive stylistic examples, elements rather, such as window and door casings, common to original housing types in the zone, shall be retained or reconstructed. Again, we have some images from the pattern book here. Uh, but notwithstanding uh, the standards in some of these subsections, windows on the front may be altered or removed to accommodate their enlargement or the construction of dormers. So little complicated standard there that would probably be delved into during the permit review process. Porches, an important section. Existing front porches shall be retained. In addition, the style and design of an existing front porch should retain and preserve, including the railings and posts and decorative treatments. This is a drawing from the Mount Rainier Pattern Book. Uh, the restoration of an enclosed front porch to its original open configuration is allowed under the standard. Flooring uh, has to be uh, tongue and groove if you are doing a porch that's visible from a public right of way. You can kind of see that here in this photo from the pattern book. Can enclose a rear porch. Uh, porches can only be screened, however, with metal or vinyl coated fiberglass screens. And they shall be installed so so they don't obscure the character defining features of the porch, including the railings, balusters, and columns. So this sort of shows from the pattern book that the screen is on top of those railings. But the front porch is prohibited in the front yard setback unless it would be compatible with the front facade setback of the block face or if it's uh, being reconstructed. Sidewalks uh, should not be paved with asphalt surfacing. And retaining walls that are higher than two feet, visible from a public right of way may not be constructed of pressure treated lumber or bare concrete masonry units. This image from the pattern book, which is not in Mount Rainier, but it shows a a block wall. It would be an appropriate type of retaining wall. Accessory structures. General setbacks for a structure, accessory structures comply with uh, setbacks of two feet minimum on each side here and here, and two feet at the rear. And the sum of all the structures on a lot cannot cover more than twenty five percent for the rear yard, which this one shows that it is not in this example. And under no circumstance shall an accessory building exceed the size or height of the principal building. And the roof pitch of accessory structures follows that same six twelve to twelve twelve uh, pitch for uh, houses, other dwellings, other dormers. And this concludes the review of the standards. What questions can we answer for you?
Thank you, Daniel, so much. Um, I also want to give a big shout out to the debut resigned board and former customer Brian Nertler, who has been, who worked really hard closely with this pattern book to make it happen. So um, we're very fortunate to have a very good design review board that help us to make sure that people follow through also with um, with the various um, information, including this pattern book. All right. So I'm gonna open it up to council. Daniel, um, it's been a really good presentation. Thank you for that. Uh, Luke, I got you, Jimmy, and then Jared.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Daniel, just thank you for your time coming out to present this. Um, like Selena said, a lot of people put a lot of work in over many years, looking at that timeline that Daniel um, sort of put up on the screen. You know, I've I've only been involved tangentially because Brian was sort of taking the lead on this since twenty nineteen. And a lot of work was put in there, and then even before then, um, a ton of work went in. Um, and and if you don't have a pattern book, we we, I think we have extras at City Hall that you can get. It's a really useful um, book. Um, it has a lot of information if you plan on renovating your home to make sure that you're uh, retaining the original character of your house. So thank you, Daniel. Thank you, everybody who's who's worked on this.
Thank you, Luke. Jimmy, uh, the first yours.
Sure. Thank you again, Daniel. Uh, I have like five quick ones. One is the pattern book we have uh, is the same, is still uh, same book, but instead of the architectural zones now, the N C O Z. Is that what I heard?
The pattern book is a separate book. Um, it was originally conceived to illustrate the Architectural Conservation Overlay Zone standards. Because it was abandoned, it went forward just as a general uh, guide to what is, what kind of construction is compatible in Mount Rainier and what the general styles and patterns of development are.
But that's still in a, that's still in effect.
Well, it's not regulatory.
But you talked about a bunch of stuff that's regulatory in your presentation. How's that, how does that relate to the pattern?
We just use the examples from the pattern book to show, highlight some of these standards. I think eventually what would be great would be to have some very specific drawings done that illustrate the standards. But for now, uh, two or three weeks into the, when the zoning ordinance takes takes effect, that's what we're using to illustrate those standards.
So the pattern book is a guideline, but it may not actually be the the regulatory. Uh, if you look at the pattern book, it may or may not be consistent with the regulations.
It uh,
I just say if we pass it out, I want to tell people what it is.
It's a guide, it's a guidebook. It isn't regular. It's a guide, it's a guidebook. It isn't regulatory. It shows development patterns in Mount Rainier, and it shows the types of alterations and construction that is compatible, that are compatible with the neighborhood. It highlights common features in the neighborhood.
I'll try and be quick. It might be good for maybe the city manager for us somehow to talk about like the summary of what you just presentation that we can put in the message or a supplement, give people a guideline, something we might want to do, because I think that would be really helpful. So we have some houses that have parking areas in front of the house. Is that kind of grandfathered? Is this like new construction?
Well, I don't believe there's any way that you would be able to-
I'm not saying we should. I just want to understand.
I don't, unless it was, there was a proposal to alter or change it or add more spaces, I believe it would just continue to exist.
Okay. Right. Big question is accessory dwelling units. People come up to me, that's basically prohibited, not just by county code now? Is that correct? Like a father-in-law, you know, mother-in-law, that's now, that's right now prohibited. Is that correct?
There is no provision for them in the zoning ordinance. That is correct.
Okay. And one thing, a violation, these city violations are county violations. Can the city enforce these or is something they have to go for the county?
They are, they would, it would be a county violation.
Yeah.
I don't know if I want to call it a violation exactly, but a non-conformance with the code if there were.
Okay.
Something-
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to ask this question, but-
Not at all. My pleasure.
And hopefully we can maybe figure out somehow to summarize, you know, some of these points, you know, without, I don't think there are that many pattern books for the whole community.
No, there's only a few. It might be like less than a handful. Originally, there were only a few, and I know we, yeah, I think if there's maybe five, that might be a lot left. But I think that, so Daniel, I will ask if there's any way we could have, if you could forward us your presentation for guidance and stuff. I know for us, we definitely heavily depend on the sign review board. They're usually the ones that go into very specific details of this. And when we have a question, we usually will forward it to them and they're able to ease off the, you know, the process of what this looks like and what fits and doesn't fit. And then they send the recommendations to us. So that's definitely good. Thank you, Jared. Jared, you're next. I've been forgetting about you.
Thank you. Thank you, Daniel, for coming out tonight and taking the time to go through this. I, you know, I know this has been a long time coming. I, I see Bruce on here, so thank you. I see actually where you started your efforts on this in 2008 and getting this to where it was today and everyone else. You know, whether they're on this call or not, I know this has been a long journey. And I know that, you know, this has been really important to help, you know, as the city, city experiences some development pressures to help maintain and retain our character. So I just want to thank you again for bringing that. I'd, you know, been going through the code myself. Your presentation made it and your, both your presentation and your discussion of it made it very easy to understand. So I really wanted to thank you for taking the time and putting that together. It's superb, incredibly professional, very clean and understandable. So, and definitely something for, you know, I think our residents can go back and watch this session and being able to reference your presentation will be helpful as well. So, I know, so I know that this is just went into effect barely three weeks ago in the county. And I, these are, Greenbelt and Mount Rainier are the first two, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's very exciting to be at the front of something. So I think, you know, I've seen MNCPC put out, you know, they put out notices about this being implemented, and now it is implemented. I'm guessing that we can look to, there'll be additional guidance forthcoming on processes and how this will be steered through with MMPPC and how this will be implemented, correct?
Well, to start off, we do have a webpage that has all, everything we have on it. If you just put Mount Rainier, NCOZ in your browser and search it, everybody can find it. And so, for example, this map is here, the zones, the link to the zone standards is there. And other things, contact information, including my contact information. Anyone is always welcome to contact me about anything, not just the NCO zone. I'm here for you. So I'm going to ask that we, to try to put this presentation we have tonight on that, on those webpages, so that people can look at it at their leisure. That's the first thing I'm going to do. I just didn't get a chance to get that approved before. And I think that we can look forward to, I believe, I mean, there, there may be in the future some type of explanatory illustrative document that would take the standard step by step, help people to understand them, to formulate projects that can meet those standards. We don't have anything like that just yet. Obviously, it'd be something, it takes some time and takes some expertise, professional expertise we don't necessarily have in the commission. So may see that in the future. In the meantime, we'll, we'll try to put some information on those webpages that could help people find their way through this. Generally, however, though, it works just the way the Gateway Arts District overlay worked or continued to work rather, because now we actually have two zoning ordinances going for the next two years. They're both in effect. People can choose which one they want to use. In most cases, if you're not doing a subdivision. So it works the way that did, which is you submit a permit and it's reviewed as part of the permit process. There isn't a special, there's any special hearing or anything like that.
Okay. Great. No, that's, that's very helpful. I think, you know, the, when, and I know this is again, a new effort for MNCPC for Greenbelt and Mount Rainier, but I think as, you know, as soon as you're able to get materials up, I think obviously we're going to catch folks as they go through the permitting process, but we want to make sure that we help, we can, we're able to help amplify the new message about this being in place. There's new standards that you are, you know, that you will be required to follow as part of the overlay zone. So folks don't get, you know, potentially tripped up, not realizing this change came. Because I can potentially see that happening for a transition period until, you know, until folks working on projects are fully aware of this change that is now in effect.
So thank you so much. And Jared was able to put that, a link to the Mount Rainier pattern as well as the NCOC on the chat. I definitely will ask Mr. Kamali if his team could put, even if it's like this abstract presentation on our medium connecting to the, to the, what's it called, NC, NNCCP website? So that way people want to reach out, they also can. But that will give it my head start. Daniel, thank you so much for all your work through this whole entire process, but also when we have reached out to you, have been very, very responsive. I know that me and Luca have reached out like various times through the last, what, almost five years now? And it's always been like, you know, a good conversation and a good outreach when we have reached out to you as well. Then thank you for being here tonight and being available. So- Thank you, Daniel. So time has run out, but if anybody, any member of the committee has any questions, let us know so we can extend time. Type it in the chat, and if not, we'll move forward to the next point. Okay. If now you have Daniel's contact, and that will put it out there so that you guys also have it. All right. Thank you, Daniel, so much. Have a great night, and we look forward to what the new steps are in. Making sure we continue informing the community, okay?
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, Daniel.
Have a good night. All right. Perfect. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item number four, Spring Park. Thirty minutes allocated for this. The mayor and council reviewed the tree protection plan recommendations from the city's contractor, arborist, and tree commission and contemplate next steps for the park. So I'm going to tee this one out to Luke as our tree liaison member for council. Luke, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So, and thank you, Melissa. So what you see in front of you right now, we're going to go through several documents. The first document, I think most people who've been following this project have seen, we've already had a meeting on this, or at least the tree commission has had a meeting on this. This is the root investigation work conducted by the arborist. And they did this work on, in mid-March, March fourteenth. And I'm not going to repeat everything here because this has already been talked about, but if you can scroll down to the third page, Melissa, I think the bottom of the third page it is. So the arborist went through kind of the roots that were discovered there with that, that root investigation. The penultimate paragraph is really that one at the bottom, which is, he talks about, he's not been involved on a project in Montgomery County, Prince George's, or even Tacoma Park, where arborist inspectors would not allow for this type of construction to proceed his plan. He also contacted several of the ward, arborist, and Washington DC to request their opinion on the matter. And they're, I guess they were in agreement with him on best management practices. So from the arborist perspective, the design that was originally presented by Jack would be good for the city to go forward on with a few tree protection measures. That being said, he understood the city's desire to be really, really careful here. And so he came up with a new revised plan that worked off of the plan that Jack provided. And I'll let Melissa scroll down to that because I think that's the new piece of information here. And I think it's page three of this one. The other pages are kind of the old, what Jack had. Yep, that's the one. And I'll wait until you can get the zooming right there so we can see it all.
Bring it down, down.
Is that okay?
We can just see the legend, so we can't see the map itself. There you go. Perfect. I like that. That's perfect. So, so for folks who are looking at this on the screen, where the blue line intersects through Spring Park, that was the original fence line that the arborist proposed for the city. On the, just on the right-hand side of there, of that blue line was the original labirinto, where that was proposed by Jack. And the arborist originally felt that this line here would do enough to protect the critical root zone, or sorry, the structural root zone of the hemlock. And so that was the original plan. After the root investigation, after consultation with the tree commission, answering some of their questions and sort of talking things through, I know residents had a lot of comments and questions during that meeting as well. The arborist went back and modified the plan. So the light yellow that you'll see there, the circle on the, on the right side of the design, is where the arborist proposed to move the labirinto. And then the path you'll see there in yellow is, is what the arborist, how that path would then intersect the new spot for the labirinto. And then what the arborist recommended is moving the fence that you would, it would be a temporary fence that you would put up for the work to be done, moving it to the green line you can see there. And then the next thing that the arborist said you should do is it would all be hand digging, and the tree commission and the arborist talked about that during their meeting as well. So this is the proposed plan from the arborist. Again, it would be all hand digging, no equipment used. And the arborist feels this would be more than adequate to, you keep the hemlock safe and the large oak on the other side of the property safe as well. So the arborist feels, feels very confident about that. Then if you can go to the tree commission's recommendations. So we had, we asked the tree commission to give their recommendation on the project. And they submitted this letter to the mayor and council and staff. And you can scroll down to where it starts, number one. Right there. Perfect. So items one, three, five, and six. Those are both, are all in support of the arborist plan. So number one is move the labirinto as far away logistically as possible. And that's supported by the arborist plan that we just looked at. Then three, digging by hand tools only. Again, that's supported by the arborist plan. Five is the tree protection fencing to hug the labirinto to minimize impact to the root zone. That's also supported by the arborist plan. Six is no heavy equipment in the critical root zone, which is supported by the plan. For two, four, and seven, those items, while they're not specified in the drawings we just looked at, those were supported orally by the arborist and Jack Sullivan during, when the tree commission had them on to talk about their investigation. Item two is do this during the tree's dormant period. So that would be the fall. Now we're in the growing season already. Four would be the digging depth should be limited as much as possible, ideally to a max of twelve feet. And then seven was having the arborist onsite for the setup, for the hand digging, and then periodic site visits by code and city officials to monitor the work. So those items, the, are the arborist supported and Jack supported as well, the twelve-inch to twelve-foot digging. You know, Jack felt that was, that was more than possible. And so that's, so all of that sort of aligns is what I'm trying to say. Number eight, you know, makes sense. If we do go to contract here, language should be included in that contract explaining the parameters here, and then probably the design from, well, not probably, and the design from the arborist as well. So the tree commission voted, and I think it was five of the six tree commissioners, I think I'm getting that number right, voted to, with these recommendations. So with that, we have the arborist and the tree commission recommending that, you know, we could go forward with this project with the design that you saw from the arborist on the, on the prior slide. And I think that summarizes where we're at right now. Mayor and council, I know we already voted to to move forward with this project a while back. That must have been a couple months ago when we took that original vote. So if we do decide to go forward, I don't know that another vote is necessary. But either way, we can't vote tonight because it's a work session. If everyone's comfortable with this plan, you know, what we could do is we could direct staff to follow through with it to see what could get done between now and May thirty-one regarding purchasing any sort of equipment that could get reimbursed through the grant. And then, you know, on another agenda item, either tonight or later, we could talk about the financing elements. I know during our budget hearing, we talked about putting money in the budget for the spring investigation to see what work could be done there, as well as signage. So those two pieces we could do at a later date and not necessarily right now. We could just see if there's consensus to move forward tonight after hearing from the public and obviously a conversation by us. And I think I'm getting everything that I think the tree commission talked about, and I think I'm setting the table here well. But if staff wants to jump in at all, Rosio or Mr. Kamali, if I got anything wrong, or please, please do, and then I'll hand it back to you, Mayor.
Rosio, Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
No, thank you so much. Just, you know, you mentioned everything and I appreciate your time.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Luke, so much for highlighting all that information. That was very thorough. I do just want to point out one thing. Within these plans, I know we do need to connect in order to alleviate that groundwater, that sitting water in the well. We need to install, you know, do something about that. So if we are going to be, you know, installing that pipe and connecting the well to the nearest inlet, we do need to do that first before we put, you know, we place the labyrinth or we do, you know, the rest of the project. So we must go through that process of getting the engineer in and doing, you know, a design and plan and have him look over everything and then sign off, you know, make sure we install that pipe first before we do anything. That's, that's my only-
Perfect.
Concern with that.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. I missed that. Right. So that would be the, the other thing that you'd probably combine into this plan and have that sort of run first. And because the arborist and the tree commission recommends waiting until the- And because the Arborists and the Tree Commission recommends waiting until the um the dormant period, obviously, that that creates some time for that. Um, although I know that would be a a time-consuming process.
Right.
Yep, Mayor, back to you.
Wait until the fall. That's that's a recommendation. So that gives us enough time to do what usually construction for the city anyways is like a summer, fall, and maybe some spring anyways. We try not to do anything during the during the winter. Uh, Mr. Kamali has said that it very clearly when he was um Director Public Works, and he's been very good at following through. Alright, so I'm gonna open up the floor. Uh, Jimmy, Jared, the floor, um is your Jimmy, followed by Jared.
Oh, uh, one question and a a couple of comments. Look, could you go back to the uh, the map you showed?
The drawing.
Drawing.
Melissa's got control.
Melissa. I guess the question is, uh, I I was wondering if we could, okay, uh, I don't know, maybe you could describe, but what I can't see on this is where the original labyrinth was compared to the new plan. So I see the green line.
You see the blue line? Look at the blue line.
I see it.
Just to the right of the blue line where you see a uh sort of black lines and the ten inch and ten inch. There you can see the half moon circle in 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 light black outline.
Oh, I see. Okay. So it's very light. I see. So that's where it was. So basically about uh.
Twenty feet.
How how many feet to the right is it? The from the center to the center about? You saying twenty feet? It doesn't look quite like maybe twenty feet?
Twenty feet away from the.
Mm-hmm.
To the east.
Yeah, but how many feet away from the original, I guess? Is what I'm saying.
Oh, it's like, it's like bordering this, the um.
Okay.
Eastern edge of it, a little bit of overlap, like a Venn diagram.
Right. So uh, the second kind of comment I had, and I don't think we really, uh, and that's why I I would feel more comfortable uh, you know, moving, possibly moving ahead with preparatory staff work. But I think we, since this has been so much of a discussion, that we should really place it on a a full uh an agenda. Uh, you know, because it's been, you know, whether we put a hole or not, so that we actually put it on the major, you know, agenda and have a formal vote to kind of move ahead or not, as opposed to doing it in a work session. Uh, the other thing is, I think I would like to make that also, so we're committed to doing something. And so I think the community knows that we're committed to doing something about the well and, you know, the the spring as part of the project as opposed to just this. And because it's been raised, you know, that that should be a priority. You know, not, you know, not the labyrinth, but also, you know, doing something with the spring, that that should be part of the the plan moving forward as opposed to just my head. And the third thing is, I couldn't understand from Rosio, no, Rosio, excuse me, I'm getting it. Is why the, from the, I see where the labyrinth is and but the, going from the well to the city, the labyrinth is like north of that. Why does that to affect? Maybe just explain or or maybe I'm misunderstanding. So the, looking at this map, the well is like south of it, right? By about another fifteen feet. So what 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 how does it to relate? I just, I'm sure it does. I just can't, I'm, I couldn't quite figure that, follow that.
Melissa, can you scroll? Sure, um, let Melissa, can you scroll down a little bit? Okay, perfect. So if you look where the well is, there's a manhole. So we would have to connect the pipe where that.
Where's where's the well? Is that the thing?
The well is right at the bottom on.
The orange line.
Right here.
Yeah, the orange line runs right through the middle.
Okay, so that's the well with those blacks, with those like, okay.
So if we're connecting a pipe through the, from the well down to, there is the nearest inlet as it right down at the corner of Shepherd and Thirty-third, which is going straight down. Uh, so we will be intersecting towards what, you know, it's proposed of moving to the la- the labyrinth.
So the so the lot, the the pipe would go actually underneath where the labyrinth is? Is that what you're saying? Because it would go to the corner?
Mr. Kamali, I think he wanted to jump.
No, I just want to let you know that uh, that was the idea if the labyrinth was originally when you see it right now, once the Arborists moved it to the east side of the street. So we don't have to worry about that because the pipe is gonna go straight to the inlet at the corner of Shepherd and um Thirty-third. So right now, the only thing, maybe the pathway, which is not really a big deal. So we could, we could go ahead and do it anytime simultaneously. So it's not gonna have a big impact on the labyrinth anymore.
Well, but that that's a little concerning because when the the pipe then go closer to the tree than than the, I mean, I'm, so if you're going up to the corner, you either have to go towards the tree, you have to go underneath where the labyrinth is. And wouldn't that kind of be counter to the issue about?
Jimmy, 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 let me tell you this. Do you see the corner of the green line?
Yeah.
Which is, which has a dimension thirty-three feet and eight inches. On that corner, if you go back toward the hemlock, where the spring is gonna be somewhere over there. So we're gonna be away from the labyrinth with the new, with the new one, with the yellow one.
Okay, and just one last thing. I mean, so explain a little bit how the pipe would work, because I just don't understand it. Would the pipe go straight north from the spring, like up towards Shepherd? Or how, where would the pipe go?
The pipe is gonna go diagonal, diagonally from the well to the corner.
Okay.
Where the corner of the Thirty-third, there is an inlet over there, and we need to connect that inlet in order.
Would go on it, so would go underneath where where is the proposed labyrinth if you take a straight line?
No, I don't see.
No?
Jimmy, do you see the little circles that have MH on it? There's one just outside the spring that is a little circle and has the word MH on it.
Yes.
That's the manhole cover.
I see.
And then there's out on Thirty-third Street, there's a little, at the corner of Thirty-third and Shepherd, there's a little circle, manhole.
I see. So we go from the, from that one MH to the other MH?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
And in order to do that, Rosio forgot to say that we have to go to the county and get the permit because the inlet belongs to the county. We cannot just connect it. We have to go through the permitting, you know, process and get the permit, which is gonna take some time to do that. Definitely, I want to make sure that everybody knows about this. Any question? Jimmy?
It's just the same thing. So you you're, so Rosio's saying that we really should do the pipe before we actually do the the labyrinth because the MH MH would kind of go in periphery, or is it, was that the recommendation? That's what I heard or not? The the pipe goes first?
Yes, well, that, yes.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
Just to remind the council, we have usually three minutes per person for each of one of us uh to try to keep on. If you guys have another round of questions, then we could come back for a second round of two minutes. And in the final one minute, uh, because if not, um, we're gonna be stacking a lot of time just on us. And I know there's to be members that would like to speak. Uh, so, uh, Jared, the floor is yours.
Yeah, no, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Kamali and uh Rosio. And um, I don't know if folks on the Tree Commissioner are watching, um, but I'll see in the chat, but you might be on Facebook. So I did want to, want to thank you for your work on the recommendations um and your input um with the Arborists um with the Arborist feedback. So I I I think, you know, the the dialogue on this has uh absolutely um resulted in a um, you know, a more a stronger and more thoughtful, thoughtful project. I know there was concerns about the use of equipment, um, you know, and that's if we're gonna, if the, we're gonna pivot to using hand tools, um, that addresses a lot of that. Um, and and a lot of the other concerns about location of items and impacts um impacts to the tree. So I'm I'm really grateful to the experts on the Tree Commission for the time and the thoughtfulness that they put into this um that, you know, came with this project and looking at uh, looking at its approach and impacts uh and getting it to a place, um, you know, that's consistent with um and uh stands up to similar projects um that are, they're building public space in the city. I um, you know, I'm, it is very important to me. We have so little public space in the city for many folks that live here, particularly if you live in apartments. Um, you have almost none. Um, you know, it's really important to build um inclusive um public spaces where we can all gather. So um, I really appreciate everyone's work and dedication to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Um, I'll wait for my train to make sure we accommodate some time for the community to speak. I'll come back once they're done. Okay, so at this time, if you have any member of the community that wishes to speak, you have three minutes on the clock. Um, but if you are in a soon meeting, uh, type your name, uh, block number, and street. And I'll call upon you. If you're on Facebook, you can make the comment and um our team will share it. Okay? Um, other than that, please stay to like your timeframe and avoid having a conversation. Stay your, stay your, your statement and then um, you know, once you're done, um, you know, if we're, if we go answer, we'll possibly answer. Okay, alright. Saying that, let me go to the chat. Okay, first person on the chat, I have uh John Patev from thirty-two hundred Shepherd Street. John, yours, yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Over fifty Mount Rainier residents have signed a petition asking the city to pursue a no-dig plan for Spring Park that includes many features around which there is a broad community consensus. Native plants, historical signs, and most importantly, repairing the appearance of the spring. About half of these residents represent basically every household in the parks and media vicinity. Other signatories live all over Mount Rainier. With over fifty residents expressing their wishes in this petition and repeatedly in public meetings over the last several months, why is the city not offering residents a no-dig plan? That's the first question. I would also like to ask how much in Mount Rainier resident tax dollars the city is planning to spend on this? I've heard the figure, I believe, thirty-nine thousand, and I would like the city to confirm that. And it would be great to know how much more in our tax dollars will this cost than a simple no-dig plan? Lastly, haven't similar city park projects such as the wonderful Food Forest gone through an extensive process of signature gathering to prove their public support? If it was an important step for creating the Food Forest, and if it was done because that is the fair thing to do, why wasn't it done this time? Thank you.
Thank you, John. I have uh Mark Ristar. Uh, Mark, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I think we've lost the forest for the trees here. The, and and especially since moving the uh the location of the peace circle without having designed the um the fountain itself. And what I'm seeing now, just from the design standpoint, is that the peace circle could be incorporated into the design for the fountain, for the, for the spring. Uh, having that uh, that paved area where you've moved it closer really to the, where the spring is, design-wise, I don't think it works at all. Um, having, the whole idea of the spring is that that's where people want to be closer to. I think people will congregate around the spring. That is the place to have uh a pit, whether it's paved or grass, but a designated circular area around the spring. That's where it belongs. And having two such surfaces makes no sense to me. Um, furthermore, I think before you do any plumbing work to alleviate the water that comes from the spring, you should have a design for what the spring is gonna be. An approved design, because it could affect how you do that piping. Where it comes in, you know, where it starts at the spring, so forth and so on. You need to look at the entirety of that rectangle. Make the right design for the whole piece. At this point, it seems to be so piecemeal that I do not think it's worth proceeding with the 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 peace circle the way you've got it now. And I would, I would definitely say, take another look at this, talk to our design people and come up with a plan that takes into effect, takes into account that entire rectangle. All you're looking at is saving the tree and doing a a little peace circle. It makes no sense. That is not what this park is about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark. Is there any member of the community would like to speak on this subject? Please uh type your name on the chat. Um, Iris Reynos forty, um, you guys don't have to put your direct address. You guys could put for um four thousand block of Thirty-third Street. That's fine. I realize a lot of you guys put your your actual address. Uh, go ahead, Iris. The floor is yours. Iris, are you there? Iris. Um, if Iris is not here, I'm gonna move on to the next person. Let me know when you're back, Iris, okay? I have uh Shivali. Uh, please say yours, your block number and street, please. The floor is yours.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, this is Shivali, forty-two hundred block of Thirty-first Street. I, sorry, I agree with Mark that that if we're gonna be, you know, moving this project to the fall that we should take a look at incorporating the design of the spring, you know, of renovating the external parts of the spring with incorporating a design for the recreational space. And um, but in, I like, I don't, I I'm, like, I was not there when the spring part got dropped. Um, the original plan was to do both the spring renovation and the recreational space, like simultaneously. And from what I understood, the spring part was dropped because neighbors were saying it was gonna be too much hassle and work and too much commotion going on uh in the area. And so then it was made into a smaller project to um accommodate that. And so, um, but yes, I I agree that this should be done holistically and together, but I would rather have something happen than like everything just be abandoned. Um, so and I, yeah, I also feel strongly that we should be working simultaneously on getting the spring, um, the exterior of the spring renovated. Uh, Jack uh, you know, had a initial design that he proposed at the second community meeting, and that seemed to be a very reasonable design. Um, so that's, I I'd like to see that move forward. Um, the, just to answer a previous question, from what I understood, that the signatures and stuff that happened with the Food Forest was part of the fact that it was from the, this was county land that had to, uh, this was county property and it was their requirement. But, you know, please, somebody correct me if that was not the case. Um, then the process, the the Food Forest process was not perfect either. There was there was a lot that went on in the Food Forest as well, and it's very easy now to cherry pick some parts of it and apply it here. But if, you know, you want to have a discussion about how the Food Forest process went, then we should talk about the whole thing, not just like the parts we like about it now. Um, so yeah, I'm hoping that since we're having a little bit of time to take a step back and look at this project, both to not only, you know, renovate the the springs, but also to create recreational space that will attract people to use space and not just, you know, I I want the spring to be renovated, but once it's renovated, that's not gonna bring people there. Um, but we also want to have a set, like, some recreational space that will allow children to stop on their way to and to school, people to hang out, all the things that were said in the community meeting in the community, in the feedback that we've been getting from folks over time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have uh Jacob Howley on next. Go ahead, Jacob, followed by Bob.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Um, this is Jacob Howley from thirty-eight uh thirty-eight hundred block of Thirty-third Street. I want to associate myself with the comments by Mark and um the questions of John earlier. Um, I it's, I I have uh not heard a single friend of mine in Mount Rainier complain that the park does not have a labyrinth on it. I don't know, I'm not aware of any demand for this, but I, I do understand as Shivali said, the interest in having more of a recreational space. I, I, what's not clear to me is that is sort of the momentum around this one idea that doesn't really seem to excite many people, that might cause harm to the exceptional tree, and that, as Mark says, seems sort of disjointed from the actual historic feature of interest in the park. So it, like Shivali said, I think this, this might be a great opportunity if, you know, any construction would need to be postponed for several months anyway, to take a step back, maybe solicit fresh ideas, figure out ways that a different scheme, perhaps one that would not involve any digging, could be accomplished that would more holistically respect the design features of the park, the environmental value around the park, and also perhaps be more interesting to, to residents and get more buy-in from residents. Without perhaps also jeopardizing the grant funding. There may be other options. You know, maybe a labyrinth could be incorporated and you keep the grant funding, but something could be done that works better for everyone. So I, I thank you for this forum, and I would, I really urge folks to, you know, kind of use this opportunity constructively rather than pushing forward with this one, one plan just because it was already on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. And there's some issues from Iris's. No questions. Thank you. Okay, Bob Lamb, forty-one hundred block of twenty-eighth street.
Thank you very much. First, I just want to thank the Tree Commission and the, the Arborists for taking a good deal of time to revise the plans. You know, really listening to the community and, and working hard to, to come up with some alternative options. And just looking at the map here, it looks like what we've ended up with is the least bad of all the bad options. I want to, I do agree with others who have said that what we basically have now is a labyrinth that's right next to a sidewalk. It's not great design. And overall, it doesn't incorporate the spring of Spring Park. And overall, this seems to have all the hallmarks of a project that, you know, early on was advocated for as a pet project, went under the radar for a really long time, and then just sort of took on a life of its own. And now the choice is we either do this kind of, you know, half, you know, design, or we lose a fifty thousand dollar grant in credit ratings and so on. So I, I guess what I'm saying is mainly I wanted to express just a great deal of disappointment in this entire process. A great deal of disappointment in this ultimate design. I completely agree that it sounds like y'all are gonna go forward with this pretty much no matter what. So we're gonna get, we're gonna get this version of the labyrinth. I would encourage a no dig approach if you, if you do that. But if there's any way that you can, between now and the time you start digging, do a real, full, holistic design of the entire park that has an environmental impact part to the process. That would be a phenomenally useful thing to do and a much more responsible use of our tax dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Now we have Arthur Stoverman. Do you want the floor or do you like me to read the comment? Okay, there's the comment from thirty-two hundred block of Shepherd from Mr. Stoverman. I fully endorse John and Mark's. I did not believe the current plan is worth passage. Renovating this spring protecting your exceptional tree are paramount. The labyrinth has no essential, is not essential. Okay, all right. So, Council, you have heard the various members of the community, and I just want to make sure we clarify something, which is like, it's interesting to hear this conversation because the second meeting of the community forum that Jack put together had everything everybody's mentioning, and it got knocked down because it felt that it was a lot for a small space, right? So it feels like we're coming back full circle to that plan once again, the signage, like, you know, the holistic approach between the spring and the labyrinth and the pathway. And, you know, making sure it's ADA compliance, right, and all of that stuff. So, the other things I do, please note that this is a work session. It is not, Robin, I apologize. I guess you logged in before I move my from one, from, from the chat to the, to the, to the screen. That, so to me, it's, it's very like, coming back to full circle to the second meeting with everybody with a holistic approach, as well as that everything that you guys have, that, you know, pretty much everybody has mentioned. So it, it feels very much that we learned a lot in this process, but at the same time, it feels like we're going back to, to the second meeting. All right, so Robin, Robin Bliss, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to echo what Mark, Jacob, Bob have just brought up this evening. I, I believe it should be done as a holistic process. And even though, you know, we've now moved the labyrinth to a point where it's, let's hope away from the tree canopy. It doesn't make a lot of sense. And one of the tenants of community development is to build on your assets. And, and the one thing I have heard is that everybody seems to want to, you know, the spring is one of the assets of this park, as, as is that hemlock. So we should be honoring both of those assets in this development. The other question I'd like to ask, if there's been any other solution for the, over, for the spring, other than having a pipe pull the excess water out of it into our storm systems? Because I know we have a lot of problems with stormwater management as it is. Our stormwater manage, our stormwater systems are already overrun. I'm wondering if any other design solution has been investigated other than pulling this water into the sewers such as a rain garden? If this goes back to the table, maybe that's something we could look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin, and my apology. I think that, I, I just want to make sure that you guys understand that when I'm switching between, like, moving from the screen to the chat, I don't always catch. So if you guys are in the process, I cannot always catch you. So let me know. Put your name back on if I don't see you. Okay, so that was Robin. I truly just have nothing to add. Whether it's already said, I hope the council will will take residents' voices into consideration. All right. Thank you, everyone. Free comments? Anything on Facebook?
No comments.
Thank you so much. So I'm gonna bat it back to Council Melissa. How are we doing with time? Melissa?
We have about five minutes, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay, Council.
You have another chat.
Okay. At certain point, I have to go back to Council. Now we're not gonna close this, this chapter. Erin, do you want to speak or do you want me to just read this? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and read it. So you guys have to, I'm gonna ask if you guys could clearly, like, say that you want to speak on it, because that way I don't put you in a, in a position where you might not want to speak, right? I agree with the comments raising concerns with the plan and that protecting the section tree is very important. Erin, north of from four thousand block of twenty-ninth street. Okay, so Council, once, clearly point out, this is a work session. We do not make, we do not make decisions at the work session, right? And I'm gonna put a stop right now to the public comment, because if not, I'm not gonna hear from the Council, and we, I would like to hear where they're at to figure out where we're moving forward. Okay? So, Luke, I'm gonna pitch this back to you, as you know, as the liaison to the Tree Commission. Right, I think. And then I'll go through every single one of you guys to see where you guys are at. And want to clearly point something out. The, the reason why the scope was minimized, right, was because of the fact that it was said that it was a lot to do, and we had to do a small portion and work on the bigger picture. Jack's plans that he elaborated are still there. There's actually three versions of the plans, right? So the reason why those two held was mainly to be able to submit something for the grant. And doing it in a smaller school was able to achieve some of it. It wasn't gonna be the end all. Because also for the spring, it was definitely gonna be different kind of work being put on. And there is, it's not that, it's being said that continuously the two projects, the need to be moving on. It's just that we focus so much on this part of it because of the fact that people felt like there wasn't enough involvement, information. And now at this point, we have overkill the meetings when it comes to Spring Park. So we're like on the other end of how much we have discussed this project. And at this point, is, is basically still on paper. So after more than three years. So, all right. Luke, I'm gonna pitch it back to you as, as the liaison to the Tree Commission, but also to, like, to get feedback from you in next steps forwards. Or what, how do you see it? Go ahead.
Okay, do we need to add more time to give two minutes to each of us, or maybe two and then one? So maybe nine more minutes for us to finish our conversation and then move on?
But we do ten minutes flat, and then hopefully we don't take it, okay? How about that?
Yeah.
Can we make a motion on the floor to get ten minutes of agreement from all of you guys?
I move that we add ten minutes.
Second.
All right. Jared, you sound like you're agreement. Go ahead. So we're at a ten minute mark. Melissa, keep us on, on, on track, because I want to make sure we were respectful. Go ahead.
Yeah. So as the person who organized the creation of the food forest and got people together for that, we did not get signatures for doing the food forest. Signatures were gotten, I think Shivali got them for, for residents to go ahead and lease the land, and then nothing happened for a couple of years. Mail, Mayor Miles sort of had it, and nothing was done. So I just organized a bunch of residents together, and I drew up a project plan with them, and then we went out and had community meetings. People were, liked the ideas that we came up with, and then we just ran with it. So, so I just, as the person who did that, we should be clear on what happened there. For this project, as Selena said, you know, this feels a little bit like, like going around in a circle. You know, I, I think I, I am gonna take some fault here for not, you know, leading early on in, in, in this project. Or, or, or sort of, you know, when, when we had that project that we settled on, it was holistic, and it was awesome. It was beautiful. It was revitalizing around the spring. It was a, a rain garden through the middle of it that was like a walking path next to it and all native plantings. And we got significant pushback from the neighbors next door, who said, no, we don't want it. You know, you know, we, we want sort of something really pared down. So, again, John, the signatures was not for the food forest. That was like two years prior to doing anything on the park. That was just for leasing the space from MNCPCC, and there was no signatures for doing anything with it. But so, and then because of that, Brian sort of said, well, we're gonna do a pared down project. We're gonna just do the labyrinth. That seemed to satisfy the neighbor's concerns. And so there's, and, and, and so that's how we sort of ended up with this, and then moving forward and, and, and whatnot. But I, I totally agree with the comments made tonight that, you know, this looks a little like, just pieced together. It does not look like, where this labyrinth has been moved does not look, from a design perspective, like it probably should. We've already talked about, as the mayor and the council, getting a hydrologist to look at the spring, figure out how we can revitalize it. So I'm, I'm on board if we want to take a pause here, put money into the budget to hire a hydrologist to look at the spring. But, you know, we have to realize, and I hope the community understands, that, you know, doing a holistic look here, we really need everybody to stay engaged on this project. I don't want people to leave the engagement, because I think that's when mistakes can happen. You know, we have limited time, and we need everybody in the community to stay involved and stay engaged. And so one possible way forward here is to have staff go back to get a hydrologist, get a quote for how much that would cost, to look at, you know, revitalizing the spring and putting a pipe into place. You know, we could, we could budget for that through ARPA funding so that this is, you know, you know, we're not, we're not looking at the budget for this. And then we move forward from there. And, and to the extent we have to, to the extent we have to get a new design, we can. If we want to revisit this, with this one, we can. But I'm, I'm all for that. And I'm all for a more holistic design. I just wanna, I just want folks to realize that that's where we were. And, and, you know, to get back there, folks need to understand that will be, you know, a lot more than, than what's here. And I had, I had walked with Public Works to see about removing the labyrinth to the spring. I, so I sort of went there and we marked it off. And the problem with that was that you're dealing with the, the roots from the oak tree that are a little bit more, that, that go around the spring. And so that's the problem you run into by moving things to the spring. But I, I agree that that would make sense for the place to congregate. But there are issues that are gonna come up in that design phase that we're gonna have to grapple with. So I don't think we're gonna get a perfect project. I think that there's gonna be risks, and we're gonna have to manage them wisely and come up with something. You know, I just want folks to know that, you know, know that and to stay engaged. So we don't wind up, you know, with doing stuff like this at the last minute. So I hope that proposal made sense. And we can probably, we don't have to vote tonight, but we could do that during our next budget discussion or ARPA discussion at a later date.
Thank you, Luke. Jimmy, then Jared?
Yeah, I'm basically on the same page as Luke, but I, I would really like to make some comments, because I get a little upset about some of the comments going on. First of all, I feel pretty comfortable that the Tree Commission and the Arborists have come up with a proposal with recommendations that would protect the tree and feel that the, you know, the way they talk about hand digging twelve inches, you know, would, would protect the tree. So I, I feel comfortable where, where the labyrinth was vis a vis the tree. On the other hand, I think Mark Rissar's comments were pretty much convincing that it's like, you know, we really should have a, a better proposal to do the spring and the labyrinth. I do feel that one of the comments made that no one really talks about having, using that park isn't really the point. The point is that we want to make our green spaces, and I think Jared said, more useful and more productive, that people come there. And adding things to a, a green space like that should help the community. So I'm, I think doing something more in the park makes some sense in terms of getting, you know, we don't have that many green spaces. So, but I, I am more that. But I do really want to make some comments on Council. I've been around here for many years. And this idea that there's a rush to judgment, a rush to doing this, that hasn't been in no community discussion, is just really ridiculous. There've been so many discussions, so much input, and I've listened and talked, and no one's trying to get one over in the community. We're trying to do what's best for the community. We're trying to figure out, you know, how can we take a green space and make it, you know, maybe have more people use it, have more people in our community use the space. And we've had lots of discussions on it. We're also trying to do the best thing for the community and try and also protect the tree. So the kind of idea that, hey, we're rushing to do this no matter what, personally, I resent. You know, because, you know, I'm trying to do what's best for our city. I've lived here for a long time. I was late in the process. And I've listened to a lot, and we've, you know, the tree, and we've all spent a lot of time. So people should just, you know, kind of chill a little bit about that. Because we're trying to figure out what's best. But I basically agree with Luke and what Mark said. We should try and, you know, try and how to do the labyrinth and the, you know, spring in a way that would be best for everybody in the community. Sorry to sound off on it, but I get annoyed myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Jared?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I'm I'm where, you know, I, I, I think, you know, again, I came in on Council last year. I came in sort of at the tail end of this process. I'm, you know, and we're, we're many iterations of discussions, many iterations of engagement on this. So, you know, I, I, I understand where we are. I'm like, you know, having so much sort of rounds of feedback that we've, the, the intent to sort of accommodate the, you know, concerns. We've ended up with a project that is not ideal. I don't, I don't disagree with Mark or Luke's, or Jimmy's point on this. I, I, I do want to or Luke's um or Jimmy's point on this. Um, I I I do want to say, and it really like it it really does bother me. I mean, honestly, it breaks my heart when we have this discussion about like, oh, these spaces aren't usable. I mean, what what we're, what we're trying to do here. What we're trying to do here is, you know, build a really inclusive community, build public spaces where folks can come. And this city is a really increasingly demographically divided city. It's really it more and more and more and we we that we have fewer in spaces, we have few spaces in the city where we can bring folks together. And it is really important to me. I mean, I grew up a lot as part of my life in apartments. I didn't have a lot of outdoor space. And it was really important to have public space where I could go and where I could feel welcome. And that's all. And then like what Jimmy is saying here. And what Jimmy was saying is like, that's all we're trying to do here. I want to build public space that that someone that lives in the apartments, I can say, hey, let's meet up, love to, let's come over here and we have a place that we can gather in this community. That's what we're working towards here. And that's why, that's why I care about this. I really care about that a lot. I really care every day about the demographic divide in this city and folks on one side of the city and folks on the other side of the city and the lack of engagement between the the two and the inner inner, the inner um, sorry. The lack of engagement and the lack of connection and the lack of just like common space. And that's, that's what we're want to get into here. So like, you know, space, you know, the advocates for a space, people that enjoy space don't are not advocating for that space until it's there. That's common with a public park. That's common with users of like a new park of a new public space. And like, that's really what I'm, when I'm advocating, when I'm caring about this point, that's really what I'm, who I'm, who I want to listen to is the folks that are in this city that want to be, that want to be with others, that want to find a space to gather together. And, you know, we have very few city um, city spaces left in this city. Um, you know, that and this is, you know, that space is present, but it's not, you know, it's not particularly accessible. And that's what, that's a hundred percent what we're working towards here. And I hope, you know, I hope folks like if we look at a sort of revisiting of the approach, I hope folks keep that in mind because that's really, really important. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jared. Uh, and thank you, council members as well for um your um, your words and and your and your thoughts, you know, um, I live across the street from a park. So I I will tell you that that tiny little pocket park that that we have is the only one in the south side for Mount Rainier and Branwood, right? Um, it brings joy to see how many people could gather there uh because it has um allowed for us to be able to share space, allow for our kids to grow and um and maximize um even through all this craziness, the COVID stress and everything. Seeing, you know, like the adults, you know, talking, um, creating that community that we all talk about from Mount Rainier. You need those spaces to be able to um, for people to feel safe, but at the same time welcome, right? Because it's their space. It's part of their city, right? And I will say, I I started the saying that I feel we came back um full circle because had we moved forward with what the second meeting was, by now we will have everything that everybody's mentioning in the park and um and and fully funded at this point, right? So at least for me, I am ba- very much where the rest of council um is at, right? If, but you know, in my sense, I will tell you for the community, like if we're moving forward with this, we need to move forward with this. We're not going to have the perfect um a hundred percent park with everything that everybody wants at the same time. Realistically, there is difference of opinions, right? But had we um gone above and beyond to, you know, between the tree commission, the arborist, you know, our staff, our council to try to like um, put time and effort into this project, I think it's been um we have touched this project more than even um our our trash can. And I felt like, you know, when our recycling and and trash can cans came around, I mean, we're discussing that almost every single meeting. That was the longest year of my life, right? Um, and we got one wonderful stuff. But I think the commitment to move forward to create this space for the community needs to be there. And if we keep going back and forward from like meeting two to like now meeting three hundred to go back to meeting two, we're never going to move forward with anything that we have with the city. And in honesty, I will tell you that I don't even think we will have a food forest right now had it had it gone through this whole entire um process that that it is. I I think that you know, the great intentions have been there in all the parks and they move forward with it and they were able to gather all the positive out of it and move forward with it. But if they will have like hyper in every single tiny little rock that came in their way, we wouldn't have half of the parks that we have for the city. That includes the community garden. That includes Richardson Park. That includes a very few spaces that we call our own as the city. And for being a green city, we have very little uh green spaces. So that's the reason why we all have um you basically have seen all of ours be important to this project and and listen and and try to adjust to the point that we're now looking at a plan that is like does not fulfill not even half of the things that we want in this park. Because the holistic approach was like step one since the beginning, right? Everything that's been brought up. So I will say at least it's a working session. And um it is important for me to make sure that, you know, just like Jimmy stated, right? Uh, the tree commission, um, if there's a group that loves trees, it's definitely, you know, them, right? The arborists, you know, and our staff, they've done everything to go above and beyond to take care of like this tree and the city has gone above any other project that we have done to be able to see what the issues were. And in order to understand better, the park can do a a better job on it, right? So to to me, I feel we're very much um where we need to go to the drawing board, knowing now that we have learned a lot, knowing that, you know, the perfect timing to like construct around this area is in the fall. It gives us time to reset and take the next steps to um, to do what we can, right? Um, that's where I see this project. I definitely don't see this project being shoveled like in a drawer for never to exist again. And I'm hearing the same thing from council. This is not what their commitment seems to be neither. Their commitment seems to be moving forward to a to a place where the community could rejoice and we're gonna, you know, move forward and working a a design, the best reflects uh what the space needs to be in a more of a holistic approach. But um you know, this is kind of where I'm at right now, and I feel like this is very much for the council side. So um Luke, um, you want to tie anything else uh to this? Please um be my guest.
No, I would just say that I think next steps are if we're, if there's consensus on it for staff to get a quote for a hydrologist to analyze the spring and develop a proposal to do two things. One, revitalize the spring and two, ensure drainage of the water, ensure fixing the drainage of the water that pools in the spring, which could be connecting it to the inlet, but perhaps there's other solutions. I'm guessing it would be connecting it to the inlet still because we had somebody look at that already. Um, but I think that could be the, we we could give staff that direction tonight to get a quote for the hydrologist. And then once we have that quote, we could bring it back to our um either May legislative session to talk about funding it through ARPA. Um, or or bring it to the May work session if staff feels like it needs that time. And I'm fine waiting to the May work session because we have the budget to deal with, which is a lot of time and energy for staff. So we want to wait till the May work session and have them bring that quote back for the May work session. I think that could work. Thanks.
So I would, I think the staff has direction to us. They'll let us know whether they could gather that quote by um by the first, you know, meeting in May or the second. So I'll leave it for the staff to give us that. Um, because I know with some things that had like, you know, some information they had moved along with, so I'm not sure how advanced they are. Um, and then we could move forward with whatever um design is. Um, we do have still like the very holistic approach that Jack created um back like a couple of years. Um, I do see one comment that I want to make sure that is um addressed. It says um uh, um, there could be recreative space, but without digging, it's just a place on the top, but then you lose the water filtration and wire retention. So I want to make sure that that um, that's that is also um part of the plan because ultimately like part of the reason why the labyrinth, the pathway was one, to make it ADA compliance and allow for other people to be able to join that park. And number two, to help with some of the filtration because a permo payment will allow for us to do that. It has worked very well through the city um that we have also seen. So I think that um council, if we are in agreement with the next steps that like uh Luke pointed out um and staff, if you have any questions, please let us know. And if that's the case, I would like to um put forward that. Um. So council, we're in agreement. And if we are, I would like to move forward to the next item on the agenda.
Yes, for me.
Thank you, Jimmy. Jared? Jared?
Oh, sorry about that. I was on mute. Yes.
And I'm assume Luke and I are the same. So um because you pointed out and I already said yes. All right. Thank you, guys. And thank you to the various committee members that um have show up tonight. All right. So we'll see you guys in the next upcoming meetings. Okay, so moving on to item number five, ARPA discussion update number fourteen. The mayor and council will discuss the status of the projects. Uh Luke, um, you uh go ahead. The the floor is yours.
Okay, I can pull up, give me a second to pull up the latest document and then I will share my screen. It's three fifteen was the latest one. Okay. All right. Okay, this is um the ARPA project plan that we've been working on so far. Um, I'll go a rundown of what we have um uh what we have done and then there are some changes that we'll make. Um, the key for everybody. Um, the 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 only highlights that you'll see in the current document are those in green, which is that we've we've voted to approve these projects. Um, on the left-hand side, you'll see the spending category for each of these ARPA projects. So this one's storm management. Um, and then consensus on projects, cost, decisions needed, dates for decisions. We're going to kind of summarize where we're at on the approved projects. So we're not going to go through the projects that are still, no decision's been made.
Um. Luke, one pause as well.
Yep.
I'm a boss of us, Mr. Kamali, to make sure that um, uh, the last meeting we requested for uh for council to hear about um the changes in the final ruling when it came to um cities that were awarded um ten million or less. So he also uh is going to discuss that with us. Okay?
All right. Um, so these projects, thirty-third and Perry, that that stormwater management fix was approved. It's a part of the thirty-three hundred block of Rhode Island Avenue and Perry Street cost estimate that you'll see later at the bottom. So it's incorporated into that project in the government services bucket. Thirty-first and Perry, we approved six hundred and nine thousand dollars for stormwater management fixes at thirty-first and Perry. And I'm pleased to announce that Jimmy really did a good job at getting um Julie and Ivy to get money for us for thirty-first street um in in the um in the state's budget. Um Jimmy, how much money did we get from the state for thirty-first street? Do you remember? Was it five forty?
Five thirty.
Um, five thirty from state for a total of six oh nine, so seventy-nine thousand. So this project, instead of costing the our 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 ARPA piggy bank six hundred and nine thousand, should only cost seventy-nine thousand. Um, so I'll update the figures at the bottom after tonight's meeting. Um, but that's really great news. Um, so we should have, you know, a big chunk of change more to spend. Um, we also allocated twenty thousand dollars for a tree commission recommendation for a climate, climate resilience and stormwater mitigation urban tree planning. Um, which which we allocated twenty thousand dollars for. There was also educational relief provided to Thomas Stone and Mount Rainier Elementary's both for twenty thousand dollars to expand outdoor classrooms at both of those locations. Um, and then there was fifty thousand dollars for access to public resources for Hispanic or Latino populations that was um um supported and went out to um uh the community for bid. There were three organizations that bid on that money. And I believe a contract was awarded to um, Selena, was that contract awarded to Joe's Movement Emporium already?
Uh, they were the one, the the one to bid, yeah.
Yep, they won. Right. Okay. Um, small business assistance, we allocated fifty thousand dollars for for businesses to get up to five thousand dollars to replace lost revenue for city businesses. Um, and we had handed out those checks um last meeting. Food security, we've done three hundred thousand dollar total for the mayor's food security efforts around the city. Um, rental relief, we have done fifty thousand dollars for. Um, and that rental relief project is still has, is that, is that program still in the development stage, Mr. Kamali, for rental relief?
Yes, we are working on it and uh hopefully we're going to have something to be released next week.
Great. Excellent.
So Luke, just can you take a step back, make sure that when, because this is, this is rental relief, eviction utilities, back rent, legal assistance. So we need to make sure that, you know, because we had mentioned was rental relief slash utilities on it. So that way, that was a bit of like the bit of the confusion, but we had applied, they could apply for either or um not mixed match. But yeah, it says it's like initial offering will be a thousand dollars maximum and to focus on back rent, you know, utilities, right?
Yep, yep.
So perfect. So I want to make sure that's clear so that way like, you know, we don't, we do not get confused among ourselves.
Great. Um, next thing, we we um, we had approved for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to revitalize Richardson Park. Um, this could potentially be lower to forty-four thousand dollars if the governor's budget is approved. Um, the mayor was great in getting a hundred and six thousand dollars for this in the governor's budget. Um, was that, has that been approved yet, the hundred and six?
Not yet.
Not yet.
That we are, Rosio led the 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 different application on that. So I want to make sure I give credit for that.
Yes, Rosio. Thank you, Rosio. Um, and then on the healthcare side of things, we um, we we moved our our part-time social worker into a full-time position, which will cost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars over three years. Um, and that position has always been overworked and it's great to have that as a full-time position on staff, connect them to county and state and federal services. Um, we did approve ten thousand dollars for vaccine incentives. Um, and then we did approve two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars worth of bonuses for frontline workers in Mount Rainier uh city staff. Um, including back pay bonuses for those employees who had consistent face-to-face interaction with the public during the the pandemic. That was a great thing for staff.
And that's already been awarded too.
Yes, and that has been awarded. Um, let me write that in. Awarded. Um, and then we allocated three hundred thousand dollars over three years for a program manager to help make sure that everything we're doing with ARPA is dotting the i's and crossing the t's. Similarly, similarly with an ARPA consultant, um, we have a hundred thousand dollars for um Thomas Michael, who's who's helped us a lot, making sure again, we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's with everything. Um, so that money's been allocated. Um, under this government services block, which is something that probably a lot of these categories will fall under because of new treasury guidance. Um, you'll see here the thirty-three hundred block of Rhode Island Avenue and the thirty-three hundred block of Perry Street, including the stormwater fixes at thirty-third and Perry and Memorial Park. This whole project, that whole block, the shared street on Perry Street, um, we approved one million dollars for. Um, so we could do the stormwater fixes that residents wanted at thirty-third and Perry, the shared street. Um, the street state improvements on Rhode Island Avenue and in the Memorial Park revitalization, all in one. Um, the Melinda Miles building, we approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make that building habitable. Um, so there's asbestos removal there and so staff can have a place uh to transition to or we could you find other uses for it. Um, scholarships for students, this was wonderful, sixty-three thousand dollars. Um, twenty-one thousand annually for three years. So we can give students, we used to give them a thousand dollar check. Now we're going to be able to give them seven thousand dollar checks um for the youth scholarship program. Uh, mayor, is there anything else you want to add here? I know you created the the youth scholarship program a few years ago.
So the application is already out. So we're uh waiting to receive uh submissions. So that's where we're at with that. So um that's already out. And then we do have a scholarship committee that reviews the applications and then sends recommendations to um council after each of the applicants. It's um, it's interview. So it's a whole entire process. So it's already started.
Great. Um, and then that's it. And so total allocated, we have here three point two seven four million. Um, that will go up by five hundred and thirty thousand. So we'll actually, oh, sorry, that will go down by through five hundred and thirty thousand. Um, so our remaining funds will actually be two point six million instead of two point one million because of the money we got for the thirty-first and Perry stormwater fixes. Um, so I think that's a pretty good summary of where we are. And then I'll, if anybody wants to add anything, um, let me know.
Luke, um, it's Potts Hall on this document at all?
Yes, it is right here.
We receive some um, some funding, right, from Potts Hall? Will we be receiving some funding for Potts Hall? Mr. Kamali, do you know what the exact amount was that was quoted?
$250,000.
Yep. And then there's like a 1 point something millions.
1.3 for next year, but we're not sure about that.
Tentative right now, the second part.
Yeah.
So I need to make sure it's there, so that we decide to utilize some ARPA funding into POTS Hall. We know what we're looking into. So if, for the next, I'm going to ask Mr. Kamali, so I just want to make a very clear statement. I think the, thank you, Luke, for putting this together and make sure we follow through with it, right? It's been very, is the reason why you're so good at this, right? I think that even as we move for the next step, the recommendation that our city manager or consultant has, right? I want to make sure that this bucket still remain as they are, at least visually for us, and that they're not just like folded into the general fund, okay? Just so, don't touch anything. So I just want to make sure you know that, okay? So Mr. Kamali, last, last meeting, you know, the final ruling came when it came to ARPA and the federal government made a new caveat when it came to cities that received 10 million and under. A new way to be able to utilize these funds. And I asked Mr. Kamali to make sure that we as council knew what it was. So that way they give us the recommendation to move forward, especially because reporting is around the corner and we could best understand what it is. So Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Melissa, could you bring that document up and share it with Mayor and Council, please?
I'll stop sharing.
Yes, please. And Melissa? Okay. All right. So what we have over here, Mayor, as you just mentioned, the final ruling regarding spending the ARPA money came out about two months ago, three months ago. I don't have the exact time on it. So what it allows, the funds may be used to pay for government services in an amount equal to the revenue loss experienced by the recipient due to COVID-19 public health emergency. The government services generally includes any services that traditionally provided by a government. Example includes, example includes construction of the roads and other infrastructure, providing public safety and other services, including the purchases. Oh my God, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to, looks like I'm losing my battery. All right. And providing public safety and other services, including purchase of the vehicle, general government administration, staff and facilities, government services is the most flexible and eligible use category under CSLF, which is the COVID-19 CSLFRF. And the funds expended on the government services also subjected to the streamlined reporting and compliance requirements. So how are we going to determine the revenue losses? All they are talking about the revenue losses. The recipient have two options in determining their amount of the revenue loss. One is the standard allowance and the other one is actual revenue losses. So in this case, our consultant is recommending us to use the standard allowance. The standard allowance allow, allows the recipient may elect the standard allowance equal to their, to the lesser of their total CSLFRF of a worth of 10 million to spend on the government services. So in this case, we have received 5.4 million. So electing the standard allowance does not increase or decrease the recipient amount of the award. The final rule does not require any formal action by recipient to elect this option. The city manager simply must make a one-time selection in the treasury reporting portal in filing the first spending report before April the 30th. So that's, that's what we're going to do by the deadline. So the actual revenue allowance, which is not really, you know, we don't have any loss in revenue, so we cannot use that one. And we're going to be able to use the standard allowance. And the recommendation from Thomas is that the city elect the standard allowance, which is equal to 5.4 million, since it gives the city the greatest flexibility in eligible use and compliance and reporting. So based on this final ruling, we can do some of the general services under this category and use the ARPA money to do some of the services that we need to do, like, you know, fixing Dr. Gupta's office or any other improvement or improvement for the roads and other, the city facilities. So I hope that I explained it well, Mayor. So in case if you have any question, I'll be glad to respond.
So and just to point out, the recommendation from both our city manager and our consultant, it is for the city to elect the standard allowance because of like the 4.4 and it gives us the flexibility. So that is the recommendation. Do you guys have any questions or? So I cannot see you guys, sorry.
Oh, you can't see? Okay. I have a question when you have time.
My apologies. So yeah, I'm going to go back to my screen. It just ran out of battery because usually I'm in both metis and, but yeah, I see your head. Jimmy, the floor is yours.
Three questions. One on the business, and thank you for getting it out. We had had some discussion that more than 10 businesses actually were able to apply before the deadline. Are we going to need additional fund to make sure the people who applied in a timely manner will at least be able to get the assistance? Have you been able to figure that out yet?
Jimmy, can I ask you for a favor? Is there any questions about the 10 million ruling?
No, well, I thought we were talking about the whole discussion.
I just, I want to do this one, so that way we, we understand what Mr. Kamali and the...
Okay, I have a question on that. So does that mean that we can disregard some of the criteria that we set up and decide if we wanted to spend money on POTS Hall of ARPA or on some of the things that the Mr. Himmler said were not really appropriate under the ARPA rules, but we could do it because we put them basically as, as city expenditures? We could do that? Is that what you're saying? In other words, there were a few things that were disqualified because they were in ARPA, but from what you're saying, because of standard ruling, we decide that the city wants to spend money on those things, that could be done? Is that what I'm hearing?
Exactly. We could, we could use some of this ARPA money under the general services, since we have received less than $10 million in ARPA funding.
So that's good news and bad news. Good news is that we can do it, bad news is that we have to revisit some of those topics aside, whether we may want to fund some of those things and how we prioritize. Okay, thank you. And just one, I don't know. The question is beyond, it's something other than the 10 million. So go ahead.
All right. So I'll do it on the next round, Jimmy. I'll pick it up so that way it comes to that one, okay? Jared, any, any questions regarding this specific part of the, of the ARPA funding?
No, Jimmy, for asking that question, that clarification from Mr. Kamali on the, on the flexibilities given, I think actually answered, answered the question I had to eat up. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Luke?
I'm good with the standard allowance. It all makes sense to me. Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Thank you, Thomas.
All right, perfect. So Mr. Kamali, you heard, you know, he needed to just present it so that we're all in the same pace. So when it's asked which, or any other council members, which, what are we doing? We understand what it is. Okay?
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
So perfect. Okay, so now we'll move on to the other part. Jimmy, since you were the first one up, go ahead. Can you repeat your question again?
Two questions. One is, I mentioned, so on the business, whether we're going to need some additional to, for those businesses that apply by the deadline and Mr. Himmler said were eligible under the guidelines. Will we have to add any more than the 50, like, or not? Do we know that yet? Or not yet?
Okay, Mayor, can I give you the mayor and council an update regarding that? Yeah, so for the small businesses, we have received 20 applications. Out of the 20, we were able to award 10 applications, 10 qualified applications, $5,000 each. So right now we have spent $50,000. And out of that 20, so six were denied, six applicants, they did not have the qualification. So we are left with four more, four more applications. Two of them are pending and we're waiting for more information. And the other two, they have some other missing information that we need to get. So basically, we got four more applications that I can tell Mayor and Council after we review all those information that we should receive by this week, hopefully. Then I will have something that will email it to Mayor and Council if we could ask Mayor and Council to allocate more money. At this point, we don't know yet, Jimmy. So I got, yeah, four more people and we're waiting for the information.
So we don't know yet. Thank you very much. And the second thing is a question about the reporting and, because I'm a little concerned that we don't have actually reporting or at some point like exactly who got the money and who got awarded and that, you know, we put it out somewhere and put it out so people know. So the April 30th, would that be a report that we can share with the public, which actually says exactly where the money that we spent, who, you know, who, you know, who received it and under which guidelines, so we can share that with people?
What we have done, Jimmy, we have created an account on the treasury portal. So I am working with the consultant and also I'm getting some help from the staff, which is going to be Melissa and Natalie in this staff accounting. And we have all the information ready to go. So hopefully by the 30th, we're going to go to the portal and enter all the data that we need to do. And at the same time, we're going to post the information on the city's social media and the website.
Yeah, the other thing to point out, Jimmy, is like, we have approved a lot of money, but we haven't spent a lot of money.
Yeah.
So this report is going to be basically food and business mainly, right, Mr. Kamali?
Yeah, small businesses and...
So it's going to be like a very small, a very small report because of it, because all things we're still working on, on defining, right? I did have that conversation with Mr. Kamali, that I'll be joining part of the team when it comes to like the supporting on that end. And mainly because, just because I'm mayor and that's it, you know, nothing much. Because it is required for staff members to submit. So usually it's like, we need to be in the room to make sure they press the button. The only person that cannot do it is like our consultant. He could do everything else, but except for so many. All right. So does that answer your two questions, Jimmy?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Jared, you're next, and then I'll go to Luke.
No additional comments. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Luke?
Nothing additional. Thank you.
So I have something regarding, not this one, because now we'll move on to ARPA specific, right? Can you go back to your, to your screen? And I know time's up. Can you add like three more minutes, five more minutes for this item, please? I mean, you might be able to answer it. One of the things...
So, okay, okay.
Second, yeah.
Thank you, guys. So one of the things that, that I was thinking of, right? Seeing now that we could utilize ideally some of the general funds, but I definitely would like our consultant to look into. Jared brought up the fact that Chesapeake Bay Area was giving out more money when it came to the various fixes of the house for to be in comply, you know, water storm management money, right? That had increased. So I was wondering if there's any way, like if our residents apply to the money and they get approved to the plans and whatever it is, and they need to, if we could, if they could apply with us to be able to get some ARPA funding other than water storm management, like, you know, field, to be able to help them, you know, paid or, you know, provide this, you know, pay for the services so that we could do some kind of matching. And so that what we could ideally, like, you know, have people that are interested in getting like the money from the Chesapeake Bay, right, trust? And at the same time, get some funding from the city to be able to make those arrangements, because I feel in the long run, it helps the city, like if various houses in the same block fix, you know, their, their, they said their driveway, right, with payable payment, it's a win for all of us. So I think that might be a question for the consultant to see if it could be like, you know, either a half matching grant or somewhere along those lines in order to look into, to be able to expand more of the funding that they might receive. So Mr. Kamali, I'll write that down if you want me to, so that way it goes, Michael and Thomas.
Guys, let me know. I will definitely ask them.
Okay, perfect. So that was mine, but thank you for putting this document together and followed through. Is there anything else that we need to address on ARPA? There was one, I'm talking to council and then I'll open it up to the public, but I had, oh my God, I always butchered my name. I'm so sorry. Could you, the floor is cleared for three minutes?
Hi, I did, I just had a question about the, the projects that have been approved for the ARPA. I know Luke had sent out an email or a newsletter a couple of months ago, which was very informative. Had he not sent that out, I probably would not have known what was going on. So the 31st and Perry Street Stormwater Project, I had asked a bunch of questions about that to the council in an email chain about a month ago. I'm just wondering, how flushed out are these plans and proposals? Where are you guys? How are you planning on communicating with your constituents about these things? Because I don't seem to, like, I noticed on, like, the little green sort of bucket for 31st and Perry that, you know, met with city manager and some residents. I have not received any information regarding that corner since that initial meeting back in, I think it was September of 2021, where I signed a piece of paper that said, we're going to keep you informed. So how do I know what's going on if this is not the format? If I reach out via email, if that's not the format? How can I get more information about what the plans are for each one of these green buckets that has been approved?
So Luke, I'm going to seat the floor to you?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So, well, definitely sign up to receive the alerts from the city when we have meetings. And anytime you see ARPA on an agenda for a meeting, see if you can show up. If you can't show up, just keep emailing us for updates. And, you know, Jared and I should probably reach back, and I think I mentioned this in an email to you, email that group of people who met there to give them an update on where things are from. I know we took a lot of folks' emails and I don't think we've emailed them back. Mr. Kamali could provide an update on where things are with respect to the contractor looking at that intersection and what can be done. And then we can talk more as a group if we want about, you know, next steps and how to communicate that, that progress out. So I'll hand it over to Mr. Kamali on the staff.
Can I, can I just put a, add it up there? Sorry, Luke.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Selena. Did I, was I out over there? I apologize.
It's yours.
Okay. Yeah, no, I just want to say, so, you know, the ARPA list that we came up with, that you saw the discussion on earlier, what that is, is like an allocation of, of funding to projects on a large capital project, like the one you're talking about. Like, we have not taken any steps to move forward. We've simply allocated funding to that effort. So, you know, that engagement that Luke is, is talking about, you know, will be part of implementation going forward. So I just wanted to sort of clarify, clarify that, you know, on some things we moved quickly, like food security, you know, because that, that's a real, you know, that, that's essentially a... uh quickly, like food security, you know, because that that's a real, um you know, that that's a essentially a covering cost. We have real hunger issues in the city. Um and those things where we allocated ARPA funds to, we, you know, we expended them because it's a very clear um clear expenditure or support workers, but um, you know, the out the the approach, the implementation, at least for a project like this, is gonna be different than um, you know, food for hungry residents, for instance, um or or other similar allocations. So and I'll I'll seat it to, sorry, thank you guys for letting me jump in there. I'll seat it to Mr. Kamali.
Thank you, Jared. Uh Mr. Kamali?
Well, as long as I receive the question, I can respond to them. But right now, as Jared and uh Luke said, you know, we're just allocating the money. The next step is to select a consultant to work on the, you know, drawing and design, then we're gonna have a community conversation. And uh when I was talking to council member Cheswick about two weeks ago, that we are planning to have to share the information with the community and get their inputs and make sure that we will be on the same page. So right now, we have not started any project yet. I'm talking to the consultant right now. And we are in process of selecting a consultant. So I do appreciate if you uh send me an email, I can, I can, you know, definitely give you an update regarding each of the project.
So um just to narrow it down, it's like it's in funding at this point that we put aside. And they're gonna select the consultants so that we could start working on the meetings with the community and the plans and stuff like that. And then they go through a whole, you know, this time per meeting and it's it's um it takes, it takes various steps and it's not just the city involved, but it was like uh county, you know, the different uh sectors. So you're still the beginning of it. We just like funded the money and laid out the network for the next step, which is like the hiring the consultant. Okay?
Thank you. That was very helpful.
Perfect. And yeah, like so sign up to a city notification. So if you notice, like for ARPAs, like meeting number fourteen, basically, every meeting we have, we talk about ARPAs. So every first and third uh Tuesday of the month, we meet. Those are our regular meetings. And if we need to add an extra meeting, we need like an additional day, but basically um every first and third Tuesday of the month, so this is the holiday. Um we have been meeting um to discuss ARPAs. Okay, so chances are, if you tune in, we'll be discussing ARPAs that that for that meeting. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem. Alright. So um everyone, do you guys any other statements? Are you guys ready to um to move into the next point of the agenda? Because it is nine oh eight. As much as I love hanging out with you guys, I have my limits. Uh so next one is a very uh very um great resolution, right? A resolution for Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Constanter Gerestofas will introduce a resolution um for Asian American and Pacific Island Islander um Heritage Month, also known as AAPI Month. Alright, Jared, the floor is yours.
Yep. Thank you, folks, for um letting me, let me introduce this. I know we've we've um in the last year, we've introduced resolution for Black History Month, a Latino Heritage Month, um as the uh one Asian American on city council is one of three in Prince George's County. Um as one of uh less than nine out of about seventeen hundred municipal electeds in Maryland. Um I'm really, you know, happy to be able to have the opportunity to uh introduce this. Um and especially, I I don't know if folks know this, um the first uh elected, the first mayor, first Asian American mayor in um in the mainland United States was actually in Prince George's County. Not a lot of folks know this. Um he was uh elected mayor in nineteen twenty eight and um uh Congero and in Edmondston. So uh really, you know, it's kind of, you know, it's kind of a piece of history that's kind of uh, you know, slip slip notice, but it's a really neat that, you know, for uh Asians Americans in the US, um becoming involved in civic life, becoming involved um and elected and um representing communities, it actually first happened here uh right up the road in Prince George's County. So uh I'm gonna go ahead and uh so, you know, Selena, sorry, my first time reading one of these. Uh even though I wrote it, so I just go down, go straight down, correct?
Uh read it and uh so that way, um yeah, no, read through it. I mean, this is a foreign piece of uh the commutation is the first one that we have for AAPI in the city, so read the whole document. It's all yours.
Thank you. Appreciate it. It's resolution of the mayor uh and city council Mount Rainier proclaiming May as Asian American Pacific Islander AAPI Heritage Month. Now therefore, the mayor and city council Mount Rainier proclaim May as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And Mount Rainier, Maryland is an important time to celebrate the significant contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders that history United States. Whereas the people of United States join together each May to pay tribute to the contributions of generations of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have enriched the history of the United States. Whereas the history of Asian American and Pacific Islanders in the US is inextricably tied to the story of the United States. Whereas the Asian American and Pacific Islander community's inherently diverse population composed of more than forty-five distinct ethnicities and more than a hundred language dialects. Whereas according to the Bureau of the Census, the Asian American population grew faster than any other racial or ethnic group in the last decade, surging nearly seventy-two percent between two thousand and twenty fifteen. Whereas there are approximately twenty-three million five hundred thousand residents in the US that identify as Asian native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander, making up nearly seven percent of the total population of the United States. Whereas there are three hundred thousand residents in Maryland that identify as Asian native Hawaiian or of the Pacific Islander, making up over six percent of the total population of Maryland. Whereas there are approximately thirty-nine thousand residents of Prince George's County that identify as Asian native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander, making up over four percent of the total population of Prince George's County. Whereas there are approximately two hundred residents of Marineland identifies Asian native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander, making approximately two percent of the total population of Mount Rainier, Maryland. Whereas the month of May was selected for Asian American Pacific I Amer- Islander American Heritage Month because of the first Japanese immigrants arrived in the US on May seventh in eighteen forty-three, and the first transcontinental war was completed on May tenth, eighteen sixty-nine, with substantial contributions from Chinese immigrants. Whereas Asian Americans Pacific Islanders have made substantial conference contributions to Mount Rainier, Prince George's County, and Maryland in both civic and elected life. Whereas Maryland, Prince George's County have led in Asian American Pacific Islander history with the election of Congero Matsudira as the mayor of Edmondson, Maryland in nineteen twenty-seven. The first Asian American and Pacific Islander mayor, not only in Prince George's County and in Maryland, but in the mainland United States. Whereas following that historic step, Asian American Pacific Islanders in Prince George's County in Maryland and in the US have have and continue to serve in both civic life and as elected officials. Whereas the May, month of May is celebrated nationwide as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month to recognize the contributions of and influence of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders here in the US. Whereas all residents deserve to be treated with dignity, respect, compassion, and justice. Regardless of race, religion, color, national origin, sex, age, income, economic status, language, political affiliation, military status, sexual orientation, physical or mineral or sensory ability. And whereas since January twenty twenty, the increased use of anti-Asian terminology and rhetoric related to the twenty nineteen novel coronavirus, COVID nineteen, has perpetrated and anti-Asian stigma has resulted in dramatic increase of reports of hate crimes and incidents against individuals of Asian descent. Whereas the city of Mount Rainier stands in unity with the Asian community and denounces any Asian anti-Asian hate attacks. Whereas there is much to be done to ensure that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have access to resources, a voice in government in the United States, and continue to advance in the political landscape of the United States. And whereas the city of Mount Rainier, its elected officials and its residents are committed to inclusion and advancing equity and justice for the Asian American Pacific Islander community and people of all races, national origins, and ethnicities. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of Mount Rainier recognize and acknowledge the contributions and achievements of influence of API community. And resolve the mayor and city council Mount Rainier proclaims May as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. This resolution is adopted by the mayor and council of the city of Mount Rainier this um today of uh nineteenth of April, twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared, and it'll be adopted on the May meeting.
Oh, sorry, May reading, sorry, not April. Thank you. First, first time doing this, I'm sorry.
No, you did outstanding, outstanding for it. Um so uh Consta, I'm gonna go with Luke, followed by Jimmy.
Jared, great job. Um thank you for putting together. Um you're getting busy these last couple of months, writing all sorts of resolutions, um changing the law. Um appreciate this work, appreciate you getting this done. I know how important this is to you. Um so thank you for your efforts. Um uh you know, we we are a, we are a diverse and welcoming city. Um and this speaks to that. So thank you, Jared.
Jimmy?
Uh likewise, thank you, Jared, for doing this. We appreciate it. Good uh good initiative.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jared. Um I think that it's not only timely, um it's it unifies also the city, because I think it's important for us to take a stand when it comes to like hatred of our community members. And whether we have like a billion uh members of that community or a smaller amount, every single one of them needs to feel that Mount Rainier is their home and we will stand with them. So I think it was very important um to put um definitely the pieces of history and the great contributions the um AAPI community has done, not just in Mount Rainier, the county, the state, but you know uh worldwide. And um I thank you for putting this document together and we look forward to like celebrating um this upcoming May. Okay, so um okay, there was the whole celebration, um celebration, um was it called? A celebration song in the back? Alright, cool. Alright, Jared, uh so this one, um Consta, this is um is here for you. Don't see it, right? And it's gonna go to the to the reading in May. Uh I am gonna make a proclamation to make sure we kicked off the month, um regardless of it, and this is like the official um resolution for it, okay? So I will work with Jared to make sure proclamation is put forward so that we like it, um we could take care of it this week. As like we work through the process of um of the resolution, okay? Thank you, Jared.
Thank you. Mayor, I just have one question. I is that uh sometimes we had done peace month. Uh and I was wondering if we had any requests about that in in past years?
We haven't, but usually like on the first meeting in May, we declare uh peace month. Um so I'll probably like to reach out to um the um Little Friends for Peace. Usually they're the ones that submit something. If not, I could look through my records and read it, because it's a resolution that's already been passed. It might just be like a proclamation to proclaim it again. Um so it's a, proclamations could be done like between today and tomorrow, not a problem. You know, but I believe like, you know, when I spoke to Jerry, we wanted to make sure he went the resolution and proclamation pass. So that way, it's part of like, you know, the rules, you know, the law of the city, uh you know, as well with it. So we haven't, but we'll reach out to Little Friends for Peace. Usually they send it to us, like within the next week, they should be sending it out to us. Okay? Alright, anybody else on this point? Okay, perfect. Alright, so moving on to item number um seven. At nine eighteen at night, guys, uh presentation of April second, twenty twenty-two, public hearing and budget discussion. And April fifth legislative mini um meeting minutes. So Melissa, um this is your um your point. I know you've your um point on making sure that we follow through with this. So so this is your documents, right, Melissa? So Consta, please look into them and give them to Melissa. Any additions um or anything you need to add, correct? Um please submit it to Melissa. The Wednesday before the May fourth meeting, so that way she could make the changes needed, so that we could go to vote for our next legislative meeting. Is that correct, Melissa?
Yes.
And once again, thank you for being so much on point with the minutes. I mean, you are definitely, this is like for the sec- April second and fifth, and we have the minutes in front of us, so that's um that's a lot of great work. We appreciate you for that. Alright. Alright, Melissa, moving on to number eight. I know, Melissa's like in twenty minutes. Alright, so moving on to add, um let me read the upcoming events and then adjourn, okay? So Growing Green with Pride is I, April twenty-third, special elections for work tour, April twenty-fifth, from seven AM to eight PM at the Nature Center. If you're a work to resident, please come out to vote. You have two candidates. Um Valerie and Tony, and the information is in the city uh webpage. Arbor Day is April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two, and the city has been doing this for quite a few decades. And this year, we got a word as were Arbor Day. Mount Rainier Day is May fourteen. We are having a parade and the whole um you know, entertainment, uh close enough of Perry and Rhode Island. Uh Bike to Work Day, May twenty twenty twenty-two. I know at least two of our um council members bike, so I guess half of the team is already accounted for. Um Kids to Park Day is May twenty-first. Community Yarcell is June third. June Team Flag Raising Ceremony is June seventeen, and Pride Parade is June twenty-fifth. So that gives you more or less some of the events. And I think I might be missing, Luke, what day is your, your event is that Growing Green with Pride, right?
Um we, I know we have, um it's the Community Food Forest. Um it's Native Plant Network and Community Food Forest Stewardship Day.
On the twenty-third?
Yep.
On the twenty-third, more information is on the city um information as well, then all those are social media, but I wanna make sure added to that. Alright, so can I have a motion for adjournment of the close of the work session?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any objections? Hearing that there is none, um the work session has come to an end at eight twenty-one PM. So moving on to the next meeting.
Mayor, can I ask for a quick five-minute break?
Yes, Luke.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would, I would love a bathroom break. Appreciate it.
Oh, but I mean, five minutes for everybody, not just for Luke. I need it. I have a child that fell asleep. This poor child's falling asleep like next to me. I need to put her to bed. Alright, five-minute break. Everybody will come back at um in five minutes. It's five twenty-one right now, okay? Five twenty-one. Alright, thank you. Five twenty one. Alright, thank you. Anyone back yet?
I'm here.
I'm here.
I see all of you guys running to your seats. Oh, this is a long night. Okay. I was actually thinking of doing the pause like after the agenda, but I I. I was very happy I took it. I put the the poor baby to bed and she just like cuddling next to me like, Mom, what's happening going to bed? Okay, so. This is the agenda for the public hearing regarding the proposed FY twenty three budget for the city of Maranier for Tuesday, April nineteen, twenty twenty two. Which has started after a five minute recess following the work session. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Luke Cheswick.
Here.
Jimmy Carlo?
Yeah.
Jared Toffus?
Here.
And myself here and accounted for, so we have a full quorum. I know, I could see you for the record for people that are not visualizing it. Alright, review the agenda. Jimmy, can you read the agenda, please?
Hold on a second, please. Sorry.
Okay.
One call to agenda, two review of agenda, call to order review agenda. Public hearing regarding proposed fiscal year twenty twenty three budget adjournment.
Thank you so much. Council, is there any additions that we need to do to this agenda? Are you guys moving forward to like? Approving this agenda as presented? If I'm hearing none, I will move forward with 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 the agenda as presented. Alright, moving on to item number three, public hearing regarding proposed fiscal year twenty twenty three budget. This time, if you have members, if we have members of the community that would like to speak on items on the budget. Please tap your name in the chat if you're here. First, last name, block number, and street number. And we'll call upon you. You have three minutes to speak. And we will let you speak. Alright, so is there a member of the community that would like to speak on the public hearing? Please let us know. And Jared, is anybody on Facebook?
No comments on Facebook.
Thank you. Alright, so I hear no comments from the public regarding the hearing. And here, there's no comments regarding the hearing, we could come to an adjournment of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is it properly moved in second? Any objections? Abstentions? Hearing none, the public hearing has come to an end. Nine twenty nine PM. Alright, moving on to the next portion of the the next agenda. Agenda of the proposed FY twenty twenty three budget work session of Marion City Council, the city of Maranier, Tuesday, April nineteen, twenty twenty two. Following the public hearing, which is to place items for discussion. I'll start with call, call to order. Luke?
Here.
Jimmy?
Yeah.
Jared?
Here.
Just in case you guys left within the last five seconds, right? In myself here, we have a full quorum. Review of the agenda. Jimmy, can you please read the agenda?
Call to order review of the agenda, proposed fiscal year twenty twenty three budget adjournment.
Thank you so much, council. Is there any changes made to this agenda? If there is none, I I can somebody move to approve it, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
Probably moved a second. Any objections? Hearing that there is none, this agenda has been approved. Moving on to item number three, proposed fiscal year twenty twenty three budget review. Marion Council review the proposed budget for FY twenty twenty three. Mr. Kamali and his team had done a beautiful job of providing us binders. I know. They were dropped off today. I know Jerry helped dropping some of them off. So we have them in front of in front of us. In order to best guide this discussion, I definitely think that I will seat the floor to Mr. Kamali. To present to us any changes or additions that he has added to the to the budget. The other thing I will say to you guys is like at ten thirty, I believe we do, we should do a check in to see where we're at. And if we need to recess. Because it's gonna depend very much. On what did what we decide as council, the the tax rate to be. In order for Mr. Kamali to come back with with the additions to the budget. And by that means like, you know, what the amounts are gonna be. So, Mr. Kamali, you have your letter in behalf of city manager in front of us, so I'm sitting the floor to you. So after you review that, I will go right into the the tax discussion, okay?
Alright, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Based on the changes that we need to do on April the second, so we have. Made all the changes. And I believe that everybody has a new copy today. And so if there is any other, you know, changes, please let me know. But I wanna bring something to Mayor and Council attention. That there are three, two items that I'm still working on it. Which is the street and sidewalk study, which we have not received any proposal yet. And we have to post it again because unfortunately, I sent it to three different. You know consultant, and they have not responded. One of them was was the tool design that they emailed me and they said that they are. Tied up at this time and they need more time, so we we have to repost the RFP again. So I'm working on that. And the other one is the traffic calming devices. That was also in the list that was given to us, the list that Luke gave it to me. And so that one also, we are trying with Mayor to set a time, hopefully next week. To have a public hearing on those petitions that we have. And the rest of the information has been updated. And as Mayor said, so I'm waiting for Mayor and Council direction on the the proposed tax rate. And the budget that you see right now, it's calculated based on the three cents. So if you guys wanna reduce it or increase it, that's up to Mayor and Council. But we have calculated also the four cents too. So in case if you need, I can give you that information.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. So I'm gonna open up the floor to the to the council and to like piggyback for Mr. Kamali. The meeting for the hearing, we're looking into their Tuesday, Wednesday of next week. It basically is gonna depend how far we are with this one, whether we move it to Tuesday or Wednesday. Because you guys are aware that we are having elections on Monday. So sorry, like a lot for us to take between the budget and the. The elections and the hearing. That's been a little bit of why we also wanted to like not overbook ourselves. Because we're, the whole team is very spread thin right now between elections and budget. So even if we like cross over to have like the elections done, it will give us a little bit of room to breathe to make sure we could. We could have the hearing. Okay, so that's more or less where we're at right now. Okay, so I'm gonna open up the floor to council. You heard from our city manager. If you guys got a chance to review the budget. He went ahead and the one that he presented, this last one is the three cent. Three cent reduction. Mr. Kamali, how much of the budget did that came out to?
That comes up to hundred twenty one, six thirty eight. Hundred twenty one thousand and six thirty eight dollars.
Yeah, and that's without counting the two, two big things that he mentioned and like maybe three little ones that we need to like address and that's it. Alright, so council, you have like the information in front of you. I would like to hear from you. Our, my goal, if we can possibly walk out at least to nice meeting. With the real property tax, so that way the staff could make any calculation they need. So that way, on most likely next, this upcoming Tuesday, they're able to. We we need to bring back the. The resolution for the budget because from the original one to the changes of like this new tax rate, it significantly changes. So that way is in in gear for us to review it and publicly. And then move it on to the May. May legislative election. May legislative meeting, and that's that's what we choose to do. Okay, so I'll open up the floor with Jimmy, Luke, Jared.
So I I'm a little confused. Thank you, Mr. Kamali, for all the work. So I'm looking at the document and it says on page four, it says seventy nine cents. But then I heard you say that there was a three cent reduction. So is that, are we looking at a seventy nine cent or a hundred value or seventy six? When we look at the box?
No, that Jimmy, the the one on page four was the FY twenty two. So, but I did my calculation based on the recommendation from Mayor and Council last time. To come up with the three cents. So the numbers that you see in our revenue, it's based on the three cents.
Okay, so just turning to page four, so we're talking about seventy six. Yes?
Just one thing, so the document is a placeholder right now, so once we get the numbers in, you'll be able to adjust the number.
Let me, so I'm just trying to understand. So on page four, just so we understand what. We're talking, so this is what we're trying to prove. It'd be seventy six, eighty six, seventy nine, seventy nine, seventy nine. Is that what you're proposing?
No, it's gonna be, it's gonna be residential lower to seventy six, point seventy six. And townhouses, the last bracket.
Okay.
The one in the bottom of the bracket, which is gonna be the townhouse and the residential. The rest is gonna stay the same.
Right, so seventy six and seventy and seventy six, the other thing, three items stay the same.
Yes.
One, I don't know, just one other question I have about the budget was. And just let me understand. We approved in offer funding the half position for.
Social services.
Right, and yet is the budget for for the public safety. A full time position or a half time position that's in the budget?
In the budget is a halftime. So it's a halftime and we only. Calculating forty thousand dollars. For the social services. The other forty comes from ARPA money.
Is forty, is eighty enough for both including?
Yes, because because the salary was fifty seven thousand dollars and something plus. Twenty three thousand dollars benefit. So it it came up to eighty thousand dollars. So we decided to get forty thousand dollars from ARPA money and forty from the cities.
Right, so honestly, I would be happier with a four cent decrease instead of a three cent. And I would try and like look this out of the public safety budget to see where we could reduce. But, you know, if I'm, if the consensus is the three cents. Of the consensus, the majority is three cents, you know, I'll go along with it, but I would be happier with a four cent reduction.
Thank you, Jimmy. Alright, Luke?
It's gonna be hard for me to make the decision between the three cents or the four cents without seeing how the. You know, the projects we identified for the streets and sidewalks fixes. Whether all those are being funded and whether all the changes we talked about are in this budget. And then there's money left over. If there's still money left over, obviously the four cent cut makes sense. If not, and we need to reduce spending elsewhere. Open to that conversation about where it might happen if it is public safety elsewhere, but I just. I just wanna make sure that the streets and sidewalk projects that we identified are fully funded. And some of the other changes we recommended are in here and then I can sort of talk more about this.
Thank you, Luke. Jared?
Yeah, I'm I'm a hundred percent on board. I know Luke and Selena, you two have been on council for several iterations of that. And every year you've reduced the tax rate and I I'm in full concurrence with the directionality of continuing to reduce it. Three cents, I'm, you know, on. I I guess I'm where I'm where Luke is on this, you know. Feedback from where we have, where we have money possibly available or not. Based on some of the tweaks that we're talking about. You know, in 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 general, effectively, to be frank, I mean, I, you know, we've got a lot of feedback on safety in this community. We haven't had an uptick in crime. I get a lot of resident concerns about safety and I'm, I have to say I'm not. Super big on. Cutting taxes a little bit more and then taking that out of safety. Public safety, but you know, I'd I'd be willing to sit and take a look at. You know, at the scenarios Luke mentions, be able to make a decision.
Thank you so much, Jared. I think that for me, like the streets and sidewalk is a big piece of what it looks like, right? Some of the things we're able to fund very, very other ways. What I wanna make sure that we are very careful not to go too down. Where next year we might have to go up and not make a decrease, right? Mainly because. Positions continue to go up and at the same time. The ability to be able to fund some positions has become hard and harder, right? Because the reality is like, you know, the 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 prices, you know, in general for everything, not just positions, but in materials and everything. Have gone up. And that's the reason why this this budget also reflects that what we used to pay for like. A street or sidewalk or even materials as simple as paper is no longer the case, especially now coming from. Still kind of like in the midst of the pandemic, moving towards out of it. It's not just. This, you know, the limit, the high price, but it's also a limitation. So there's times where. You know, Mr. Kamali, like even clearly stated, like, you know, usually like you put stuff out, right? And we have good bids, so that's gonna delay some of the information. So I'd rather us. Go towards like being secure, right? And that's what I'm meaning towards like the three, so that would gives us that extra room if need be, right? And that way we also could work with staff. Moving forward on what else were the the final things that we need to add to it. This is definitely, Mr. Kamali, thank you so much for putting all the extra effort into this. It it's a lot of work. I definitely know that. So. I also wanna make sure we are aware that the taking money from. You know, the 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 safety budget, it's not easy as just taking it out because some funding. Only fits to be able to supply that department. The other thing is like, when it comes to how much we put in it, it also takes into account a differential. So I don't wanna make sure we drop it so low where we get ourselves in a position where we're having to cover more people for overtime. Then having like boots on the ground. It makes a difference. We have to cope with the reality that we're next to DC. We need to have to cope with the reality that as much as help we we get from Prince George's County, but he else, nobody knows our community better than their own officers. And if we want the higher training and the community service that we expect from our officers. It comes like with extra training and in a different look. in a different look of what community policing looks like. So that's where we're at. And the other thing is like, keep in mind that our social service coordinator got moved into that position. So that's also why um, there has been a bit of like a bumped up on on that department unnecessarily because there's a more um, you know, um, overload of people there. Okay, so, um, I need to ask you guys if moving forward, if you guys are comfortable leaving it at three, right? As we move forward and trying to fi- um, as we move forward to Mr. Kamali finding the information, but we also need to realize that we are at the end of April. Uh, the first um, the next round of the ordinance to be able to be read has to be put um, in May, and then we have to send it out. And then we go for a vote, so I need to make sure that we are fully aware of that. The last thing we need is to run out the clock and get ourselves in a bad situation. So saying that, um, if we're right now at three percent, leaving it to move on, right? Um, until Mr. Mr. Kamali like um, gets whatever the information we we need. Um, you know, I don't know if we need the meeting, uh, we do need the meeting for next Tuesday, just so we could read the resolution based on the um, on the three cents. In order to move forward, because if not, uh, we'll get ourselves in a situation where we're gonna be somewhere between middle of June trying to address this. So I need to hear from you guys, what you guys see as the as the next steps forward when it comes to um, the budget. Um, and also the tax rate, because this is like the um, this is, I believe, like the the longest we have gone without making um, this decision, and they also need to put like, you know, make sure that the legal paperwork that need to go out are out and make sure we do not miss uh deadlines that we need to miss. So Luke, I'm going with you.
So, Mr. Kamali, when we sent you the changes that we had talked about in in that email following the budget hearing, um, were all of those changes incorporated into the budget that's in front of us?
Yes, I can say almost except, except the items that I just read it to you. The street and sidewalk traffic calming devices. And uh, the last one is the logo, but I talked to mayor this afternoon. That's not really that much, but I can say yes.
Okay, and is there still money? Um, is there still a surplus?
Yes, Ron uh has the number. But before we give you the surplus, I just want everybody to know that uh, like, you know, on the speed camera, we are estimating to have seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. It could be a little bit lower or it could be a little bit higher, so I like to stay conservative as much as possible. Because that's my first budget and I wanna make sure that next year I'm gonna be fine. So that's why we, we would like, you know, to concentrate on that, you know, three percent. But Ron can give you that number and Ron is on the line. Ron, do you have that number? I think it was around three hundred thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, uh, it is uh just over three hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
Okay, and how much is in the streets and sidewalks line item right now? Is that still unchanged? Is it still five?
Five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, and does that five hundred thousand dollar cover all of the sidewalk and street, the sidewalk fixes that you wanna get done?
Yes, the three locations that we presented to the mayor and council on April the second.
Okay, and though that's Thirty-Fourth Street, and I'm sorry, when we did the ten?
Yeah, that was the Rhode Island Avenue between the Circle and Eastern Avenue.
Okay.
And it was uh, the Thirty-Fourth Street and the Thirtieth.
Okay, um.
And the tailor was not included because you remember that the sidewalk was not, you know, doable.
Right, right. Um, I'm, I can't find the email I sent after that because I'm I'm, I, for some reason, I think that the cost of just those three projects came in at over five hundred and I'm just.
It came up to four hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, so we're good there, okay?
Yes.
So, um, you know, I I think, so another one cent reduction would just cost forty thousand dollars. So that would leave you with two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in surplus. Um, which I think, you know, if you, you know, if you feel that the speed camera revenue projection is a conservative estimate, I think the two sixty left over there is enough. And we could, we would be good with the um, the four cent reduction then. If you guys follow. We would have two sixty in 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 surplus and we could do the four cent reduction because each one cent costs forty thousand dollars.
So, question for you. If we need to do matching funds, I know we have four. About a million dollars is already compromised and the other million something is gonna be money that we're gonna have to potentially put upfront. I just wanna make sure we do not, we do not get ourselves in a position where we don't not, we don't not have enough money in case we need in the reserves, right? Um, because if the one point something goes through, most likely it's gonna be a reimbursable amount. So I need to make sure we're able to flow that money in and out without having to get ourselves into too much financials, you know, struggle.
How much do we have in reserves?
We have three, three million in investment and then something else.
Yeah. Three point one is the investment.
Yeah, so at least I will say like at this point, if we um, we have about a million in money compromised right now between matching funds and reimbursable funds, right? So I wouldn't touch that one million, right? And the other million will will be pending on whether we get the money for um, Pots Hall. Right, so that's kind of where I'm seeing, I wanna make sure that um, if we need to put money upfront for certain things, um, we also have it and the other, well, part of the million is also like the million dollar sets and fund that we get money in and out from depending on the projects that we decide to um, support. So I wouldn't consider like having three. I was, I was still like, think like maybe one that is like potentially not touched, but that's more or less, and Mr. Kamali also went ahead and added to this budget what uh his maintenance schedule looks like for the other buildings. And that's pending that nothing happens to any of the buildings. Uh, so that's the reason why we sometimes give like, it's not just a consist, you know, the the extra money that we put in the budget for emergency, but that also like in the past, we have been able to use money from the reserve when when uh we have had like bigger issues with our, with our buildings, and I know um, some of them need extra work. So I say, I mean, you could bring both three and four, right? And then see what it looks like, um. But I don't want us to get too close to like, you know, um, to the point that you're putting a hundred thousand like into the, moving forward to the reserve, you know?
I just wanna mention that the number one people complaint I get from people is is the taxes, and a lot of new people coming in here are paying, you know, ten, twelve thou- you know, ten, eleven thousand dollars in taxes. So, you know, an extra penny is forty thousand dollars. Uh, you know, uh, tax rates have gone down last few years because the appraisals have gone up a lot, and I think, you know, we can afford a, you know, a four cent tax, you know, uh, decrease, you know, given, you know, how much we have and reserves and the surplus, and it shows the, our kind of residents that we're kind of listening to what they're talking about in terms of the tax rate. Anyway, that's what I meant.
So just to make it clear, if we decide not to go for it, now we're not listening to them, because it's like double the amount that we've ever reduced, maybe even triple? So I don't want us to put in a, in a position, and remember, every single one of us pay taxes, so I'm pretty sure every single one of us would like that extra break. So I just wanna make sure it's clear with us.
It's not about me or you, it's about the community, what we're hearing, it's the mindset, yes.
I just wanna make sure it's clear that this is not um, you know, us versus the community. It's like us trying to make sure we we uh, we made the the decision, we already heard from our city manager, right? Where he feels we're at, if we need to sleep on it, then sleep on it. If you guys wanna make a decision, I'm fine either way. You know, but our job is also to put the information forward, because what I don't want is next year having to come back and say we're raising one more penny because, you know, we need to be able to fund whatever needs to be fun. So um, so you heard from our city manager there in his recommendation. You have a budget in front of you uh reflecting the three cents. Um, if we feel comfortable with like that we are not gonna be asking for any more sidewalks and streets or anything beyond the three of it. Um, and I'm not even sure how much the calming device are gonna cost at this point. Because that's uh, Mr. Kamali, um, even having a ballpark of what that that will cost, even if it's for the three uh calming devices um, for those streets?
I would put uh something between hundred to hundred fifty thousand bucks. Based on today's, you know, market value or price. Because everything is very expensive and I wanna make sure that, because we have four locations and uh, I believe, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, we should be fine.
Okay. Jared?
Oops, sorry about that. Um, yeah, I I I wanna be clear that I I I mean, I hear, I hear that, and I I wanna reflect, I mean, I've been here longer than a number of you, but because I left and came back, I mean, I, I actually pay the tax, I actually pay property taxes because they reset when I left and I rented my property. I actually pay property taxes similar to someone that moved in here in twenty nineteen. So, like, I I I, trust me, I I probably feel this more than almost anyone else on council. Um, due to, you know, me being out of the city for a couple of years and coming back, losing the homestead tax exemption for those years. So like, I'm very cognizant of that, I'm paying dramatically more than I once was. I I I will again reflect that, you know, years ago, we did not have the support to do, in the tax base, to do anything, safety code, and um, you know, we're at a better place for that now. So I mean, I I feel good about us cutting the tax rate. I am, I have anxiety about cutting the tax rate any, much higher, and a lot of that, Jimmy, uh in particular, is because of uh where inflation is right now. Uh, both in the rise of cost of goods and cost of services, I'm, I do, I I do, you know, but I live this in my, you know, day job. It's affecting everything we do. We're a manufacturer, I, costs are going up. And I, it does make me a little, pretty anxious to, you know, make too many adjustments downward when everything that we're gonna be doing in the next year is gonna be affected both from a labor standpoint and a supply standpoint of rising prices, and we don't quite know when that's gonna stop. So, um, you know, that's, that's where I am on that. Um, that can be a hundred percent frank. I mean, again, you know, as Selena said, I think we'd all love lower taxes. We're also a city with not a big commercial tax, we don't really have any commercial tax base. And a lot of services that, you know, are, you know, we're expect, people are expecting us to provide, and we have in many cases, you know, one single person uh providing those um, pro- from a project management standpoint. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Um, I think that's to me like, the biggest concern is that that we're estimating on what some things are gonna cause. But we're seeing like um, things just continue to go up, right? And I don't want us to get to a position where we tire stuff up so much, um, that we might get ourselves in a situation where we're withdrawing more money than we would like to from our reserves to be able to make uh complete some of the plans that we have. Um, you know, ARPA money is great, but the reality is like, it's not eternal, right? Right now we have it, but that thing needs to be gone, like basically spent by, you know, the next few years. Um, and the the way the projects are looking, we kind of are estimating what they will cause. But the longer um, it takes for us to be able to get the permits and get those contracts out, um, I could definitely see those numbers rising. So that means that we're gonna be getting um, a lot less things that we think we're gonna get, um, even the longer we're able to weigh on some of these production items. So um, council, this up to you guys. I just wanna make sure that, you know, we have a clear discussion where we're at and and trust me, if we could like reduce it heavily, I mean, I think for all of us. So I'm gonna go back for the final um, for the final round. Um, okay. So um, Jimmy, you go have the floor. Go ahead.
Sure, you know, a penny is forty thousand dollars in this kind of budget, should, we should be able to find that. And I'm gonna stick to a four cent reduction. I understand what you're saying, I understand, you know, if we have to raise a penny because we can't afford it, we'll raise it later. I mean, I was in a council that had to raise taxes because we had to, because we didn't have the money. Uh, if we have the money now, we should try and do it. It's only forty thousand dollars, but you know, yeah, I'm gonna kind of stick to that position. I understand what people are saying, but I I think it's something we could afford. Thank you.
Luke?
So, two things are concerning to me. One is the inflation point that Jared raised, and so I'm a little nervous now that some of the things that we cost out for could be more expensive. Um, but the other thing was the traffic calming devices, so I mean, just a question to the team, do you, do you all, are are we gonna be going forward with traffic calming devices with speed humps in these areas, or are we gonna wait till we do the big study? Um, do we need to have money set aside for for that? Um, you know, what do people feel there? Because that's a hundred thousand dollars off budget that we haven't accounted for, so I'm just wondering what people feel about that.
Council?
Are people okay telling people no, they can't have the speed bumps they want? Like, is that? Wondering where folks are on that.
And remember, we only have three petitions, and I think that there's like two or three coming our way as well. So the numbers are not even solidified yet, so Mr. Kamali gave you based on those three. Not even the other um, two or three that are coming. Because once we close that out, it's like that is the amount for it. And it's very hard to move money towards that, that, because we have it, I mean, we're gonna be doing so much construction work, um, and improvements and water storm management the next, you know, in the next year, starting it and on it, and that, that's the part where like, it's a lot. So, but Luke posted a question, uh Jimmy, Jared, whichever of you guys would like to answer, how you guys feel towards that?
I I, you know, I, I'll just tell you, my opinion is that, you know, you're talking about bigger numbers than me, forty thousand dollars for the one cent reduction. You know, I mean, talking about, you know, you know, a lot more money that I, as I say again, I just don't think, you know, I think we could afford, you know, the extra penny, but you know, that's where I'm at, you know? Obviously, there are a lot of important issues, we, you know, you know, things we wanna spend money on and supportive and, you know, I just think, you know, like uh, some of the reduction is also a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
I I, I mean, Jimmy, and I I guess like I wanna like, I mean, I'm leaving this with construction projects that doing day to day, and I mean, we have like a twenty percent cost escalations. But like supply inflation, and Jimmy, I'm, I just like, I I feel like we're we're kind of, we're kind of talking about some different issues here. I I mean, they're all intertwined here. I think I'm 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 just like concerned about like directionally, you know, wanting to cut, but also like having this, this concern about like rising costs that is very real. I mean, we're not projecting, we're not guessing maybe inflation's gonna happen, like we know it's going to, and it it's been happening significantly, and we can track it. I mean, if anything, I mean, it makes me antsy about cutting taxes.
Twenty thousand dollars is one half of one percent of our budget.
Yeah, but Jimmy, can I finish, please?
Sorry, sorry, pardon me, please. Sorry.
So, y- you know, I I I, I, I I think it's a question overall, like we may face very increased product cost for, you know, and and the discussions, you know, how much do we cut taxes and like, I, like, I would love to continue cutting taxes, and I think we should, but like, we also don't know where costs are gonna go. But we do know they're gonna go up. So, you know, I I'm, that's where you're getting my resistance on, is not that I don't wanna cut taxes, dude. And as I mentioned, I'm probably, you know, everyone's impacted in the city, and, you know, of the four of us, I'm impacted more than anyone else, but like, it, you know, I I, I'm I'm living this stuff like every day, and I, it makes, it's giving me a lot of anxiety. This amount of anxiety, so you you know, that that's, that's kind of, kind of where I am on this whole thing, and that's why you're seeing some pushback from me. You you know, that that's that's kind of, kind of where I am on this whole thing, and that's why you're seeing some pushback from me on this on this topic.
So, I'll I'll tell you where. And Jimmy as well. Um. Some of the security measurements, especially around the school, right? We haven't even addressed those yet, right? Um, are needed. You know, bunker hill is crazy, right? The last thing, I'll tell you this, the residents are not gonna care much if a stand was like dropped or not, if a child gets run over in some of those like. Positions, and that's something that we're gonna have to look very quickly and very soon. Because the way our cars are driving on both thirty-four but also on bunker hill. It's not very safe, and I'll tell you this, this is like me picking up my child like every single day. Right? So my thing is like, that's what I said, there's more of them coming, and I believe more of them are coming, because bunker happens to be like. A very high solution that we need to do a holistic approach, but something to solve that in the meantime, a hundred percent. And that is gonna have to be, um, there's gonna be some costs associated with that. We a hundred percent know that. So to me, it's like, especially with some of the traffic calming stuff. I don't wanna get to the point where, you know, the bus got hit like on Easter and that's why they put a light. Right? And that's some of the things that I'll tell you this, like. You hear a lot of budget cutting, but you're also hearing a lot of people like proposing items where. We need to make sure our streets are a lot more um, more safe with traffic for coming than than anywhere than anywhere else, but the biggest um. The biggest, you know, group that's been raising their voice are like, you know, the parents around the schools, um. Because it's it's a lot of cut through going um, going through and I'll tell you this, um. The food distribution on Thursday, like. People traveled through there like, you know, like if it was the equivalent of a freeway, right? So that's why I'm like, I'm very invested in making sure. That the study like also covers the area where the apartments are at. Because if it's not safe for me to stand there like with like obviously gear on, right? It's not safe for people to cross this, so. I think at least the way I've seen it, even the last, you know, five years that we have served, right? There's so many of them that we need to um, place in order to create the city a little bit safer. So I I will not be dismissing putting some of them, you know, whether it's holistic approach or. You know, taking care of some of it right now to address that, that's something that we do need to take into account, so. I I I think that. Just basically going along with what Jared also said. That the prices continue to go up, and I'm not saying like, oh, from here to six months, they're gonna go up. They're going significantly up like um, very fast. And um, I did mention last time that um, unless it's like another economic relief. Right from the government to the residents, you know, we might get ourselves in more trouble that um. That that we think, and this is where like the various services the city provides are able to help our residents, just like we did through COVID. Right? We were able to help the residents collectively, um, and make sure that some of the items did not stop, like. Trash and recycle did not stop because we had the team to go out there and make it happen, right? And that allowed for us not to be able to fall into like um. A health issue, right? Um, because the first people were like, oh, maybe, you know, they should be like picking up trash and recycle every other week, right? We're like, oh, no way. Right? And our team stood up to make sure doing it, like, you know, when it came to like our PD members. They were delivering food, they were delivering like test kits, they were buying food diaper, I mean. Our team went all out, tried to, you know, be there for our residents. And I wanna make sure that we do not commit an error where we like continue to trim down. And put on hold some of the infrastructure that we're thinking of doing, that's gonna benefit the cities severely in a positive way in our residents. And but at the same time, not get to the point where we're like, you know, cutting people off of of our budget, trying to um. Uh, trying to find those extra pennies once like, you know, once we need to make up for the extra costs of things going up. Somewhere we have to do a budget amendment to balance this out. And where are we gonna get this funding up? Because our reserves are not eternal, let's be real, like, and for the city our size with a very overpopulated city. Um, four million and Mr. Kamali could give you the numbers for how long with four millions will hold the city. In case like we continue going into this like, you know, um, into this route, it's not gonna be for long. So I rather like. You know, three cents sound, it definitely is a lot more than we have raised in the past, I mean, reducing the past. But also gives us at least a wiggle room in in case um. In in case other stuff we need to address. So Luke, I hope that answers your question between all three of us.
I. Kind of, I if we wanna go for another round, I have I I have thoughts on it, I have new thoughts. I'll just start talking. I was, you know, I I'm assuming Jimmy for the, so I I just do wanna say one thing, I know you made the comment of it's it's only forty thousand dollars. Well, that's sort of. Um. Overlooks the fact that, you know, we we're all in agreement on the three cent reduction, so we're all in agreement on reducing tax revenue by a hundred and twenty thousand. So it's not like we're just rejecting a forty thousand dollars. I mean, you could, you could, no matter what our. Reduction is that we agree to, you could always say just another forty thousand is just another one percent. We can find it, we can find it. So at some point. That's sort of a slippery slope argument. Um, so I think that, and and I. I'm concerned about the inflation. I'm concerned about. What residents are gonna want by way of traffic calming. Although I think maybe some of that could be offset by whatever we do on a on a on a big picture plan, although I I think there are residents who are gonna be. Calling for the traffic calming devices and they're not gonna wanna wait for a holistic plan, so I wanna make sure there's. Funding that we could potentially tap for that. Um, and. Yeah, I think Jared just made a good point about inflation that's kind of making me scared, and and I just wanna reiterate that we are reducing taxes by three cents. Um, and I think that'll provide. You know, a lot more relief than just a just a one, so one extra cent isn't gonna provide a whole lot of relief. In comparison to the three cents, I think we're doing good there, so. I think um. I think Jordan, Selena convinced me of the of the three cents, and and I and I assume for the cost reduction, Jimmy, we're gonna entertain. Not adding the detective position, but. I just go back to that meeting we had on thirty-fifth street with residents there and I I can't. I can't do that to those residents based on that conversation we had that day on thirty-fifth street, so. That's where I am.
Well, I maybe, is it a Selena we're going around?
Yeah, go ahead. Of course yours.
No, I I may be in the minority and that's fine if people wanna go ahead of three percent, I mean. Uh, yes, you're right, it's a hundred and twenty thousand. I I was, you know, our population has not increased. You know, our budget has increased dramatically. Uh, we also have other kinds of resources. Uh, I think some kind of reduction in resources, and this is two different issues. I also don't feel we need an extra. Uh, public safety person, that public safety person is much more than that. This, I don't think we can solve the farms and the city and crime. I mean, we get these crime waves and we need county to help us. Adding another patrol office is not gonna make our city much safer, that's my personal opinion, but. I just think, you know, that, you know, when I was in this council, the budget was like four million dollars. It's now like eight million dollars and uh, it's great and we do more resources, but at some point. Inflation affects the homeowners who have to pay more things for their uh, for their goods. And seeing some kind of reduction is helpful, but look, you know, it's, you know, I mean, we're all trying to do what's best for the city and. The majority says to be sense that be it, but I I feel like I should push a little bit. That I think we can do a little bit better given the kinds of resources we have, you know, coming in, so. I don't think it's worth continuing the discussion, you know, if there's a majority goes to be sense, so be it, I'm although knowing that.
Thank you, Jimmy. Uh, Jared.
Yeah, and and Jim, I I just want you to know that I I'm not. I'm not at all opposed to the thing you're saying, the things you're saying here, like, I mean, again, I would love. Love, love, love to cut taxes some more. I, you know, you're you're mentioned about being on council. You know, when the budget was four million, I mean, I remember, and that's when I moved in here in twenty ten, I remember services being like nil. I remember like. Very little response. I remember code being essentially absent. I remember, you know, like, just just. That the things, you know, that the city's expected to do. Um, you know, the things that residents are asking us to do, the demands that are like, they're so much higher on code. Than they used to be, so much higher on public works. So, you know, because we have a much more. Demanding populace than we once did. Um, you know, that has that has said, you know, I mean, everyone gripes about taxes, I mean, I do too, but I I. You know, I I hear very little. That, you know, oh, I want taxes to be lower, but I hear very little, like when we've had, you know, again, these crime, these crime waves or these. You know, questions about whether we do a service or not. Um, you know, I I I'm not hearing from residents cut this service. I I'm just not, so. You know, I mean, that's that's kind of, that's that's where I am on, that's, I'm I'm sorry, that's like where I am on this, because. That's what I just keep hearing over and over and over, you know, like, so. I, you know. I I'm thankful our budget is where it is at the moment, because we have like, you know, code that comes. Which they never did, like, we had a lot of things that just didn't happen in the city, because we didn't have the resources and the staffing and so forth, and so like. You know, I'm, I mean, that's. Where I am on this, I am, I am, and again, I'm gonna say this for a fourth time or a fifth time or whatever, I am really worried about. Inflation and where things are going and, you know, I am worried about. Crime, um. You know, I I've had nothing but residents, um. I I've had residents bring this up, I have residents that have been robbed, I've, you know, I've. Had, you know, friends that have been like, like some victims of crime, um. I I I I just, you know, I I I personally find, I'm I'm having a hard time like. Directionally with some of that, some of that stuff, and that's that's why I am where I am. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think the other thing for us, Jimmy, is that um. You know, this offers some extra relief when it comes to the people that have been here in the long term, right? We reduced it from forty to thirty years, our um, our home credit, so I think we definitely need to be pushing more people into um. Into applying for those benefits, so that we're also helping the people that have been here long, but also when it comes to the homestead and everything else on it, right? So veterans' tax credits and and things like that, so we need to um, in order to to help the other gap. Um, we need to make sure that um. We're driving them towards that, and if there's the credit that we need to create to like be able to help those that really need it. Because lowering taxes, you know, you know, it's a straight through, some of them need it more than others, some of them definitely like um. You know, could could with or without it, but I would say that three gives us that. The ability to have that extra room in case, and you know, for inflation, not in case, due to inflection, right? But also puts us in position, if we see like, you know, where we're at next year, we could make sure that, you know, we don't have to reduce one cent next year, that we. We potentially could reduce two cents or three, right? And um, that's something to look into, right? But the other thing I will tell you, um, you're talking about full complete departments that we didn't have back in those days, right? Cause you know, like, I haven't been here like for eternity, but my family has, you know, my family, but um. But when it came to like, you're talking about things that are expected from the cities, the whole communication team. And the reality is like, we have one communication coordinator, one person that those photos slash video, right? Um, we have one economic development person that um. That for a city, we need to be able to utilize these positions to make sure that we're able to bring the fundings that we need into the city. To provide um, the things that are needed when it comes to like, you know, your uh, public works. It's like they're expected to also have like a consultant to be an arborist, right? In a different company that does the cutting and evaluation of trees and be able to plan and maintain like. Hundreds of trees, that's like the requirement of of that department now. It's not just like pick the trash and re- and recycle then um. And you're done for your day, right? Uh, public works is not a lot more than just um, than just your pickup service. Um, it's, it's more of like your your green outreach and infrastructure for your tree, for your climate change. For your Chesapeake Bay, um, and the same with like every single department, you know, are still, even with the budget that we have. They do so much to try to get money into the city to be able to. Provide the things that we need, and I think that sometimes people don't realize. How much work they do to try to provide grants. In order for us to like be able to have the extra, the extra things that we need, right? Um, but all around, it's like you have full departments, you know, obviously when you had less, you didn't have a, you know, your your. Your finance person was your HR person, which that always, that didn't work and was answering phones at one time. You had your city manager, who was your city clerk, who was your front office, and the reality is, the kind of workload we're giving all of our staff. They they're not in a position to do like five jobs each, because we're already like going very thin on the things that we do. So the budget might seem a lot bigger, but the requirements that are. Are asked for our residents from us are are definitely a lot bigger. The other thing is like to keep in mind. Um, and Luke could better maybe to tell this, when we joined council. Um, there wasn't a set plan when it came to um, fixing the streets and sidewalk the way it was developed with the tool design, right? So there are sidewalks and streets in this city that haven't been fixed like. And what it feels like a forever. Um, some of them don't even exist, some of the alleys look worse than a third world country. Walking by, so that uh, even creating um. Creating an expectation of so much money is being put into budget for street and sidewalk plus whatever the winter comes, cause. Every winter or every big storm like Mr. Kamali has to go. Out there extra time to find out what uh, the emergency locations are, that might be like number ten in our list. And they just like rise to number one. So I I would say. Let's continue pushing people for that home, you know, to the home, you know, to the. To the other credits that we have to try to make sure those that need the extra help get it as well. And um, and see where we're at based on what the inflation looks like, and and hopefully, you know. We don't fall into a position where um, we are in more need to cut services, cause you know, you should tell people like, here's the budget, how many services should we cut? And usually they come back adding more stuff to the budget and not deleting on it, so um. But I think three cents has been one of the biggest ones we had, and the other thing is like um. To to uh, Luke's point, it's not just forty, but it's like, you know, times three now. So it's a big chunk of the budget we're asking um, that we have like reduced um. When it comes to um, to this one, and hopefully puts us in a good um, in a good position, um, even based on the negative trending that 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 is happening um. With items. Anyways, I talked a lot, and um, it's ten twenty-three, guys, um. So if you guys wanna have another round, please let me know, um, but if not.
Let's just do it. I mean, the 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 idea is to have three cents, I'm for four cents, and let's go and move on. Sound a principle horrible thing to have difference of opinion, so let's just get us to our vote and go ahead, move on.
Okay, so council, I'll go ahead if um, I'm asking uh, for you guys, for us to give direction to our city manager. On what we want the tax rate to be, um, and if you guys have one, Mr. Kamali, like repeat it back to us, the word specific, so nothing happens like last year, right? Um, so. We're talking about the resident, can you move it up, Melissa, please? Does the the screen, so I could see it, thank you so much, Melissa. Um, the residential single family real property tax rate for it to be seventy-six cents per a hundred square access value. And that townhouse real property tax rate to be seventy-six cents per a hundred um. Square of asset value, and the rest of them remaining the same. Correct, Mr. Kamali?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so council, can I have a a straw draw of like. To give our team direction, so that way they could start working on the resolution that we need to see on the next meeting?
Yeah, I'm good with the with that, the three cent reduction, so seventy-six cents. For residential and townhouse and the rest the same.
Thank you, Luke. Jimmy?
No, I think we could do, I think we could do better, but.
That's that's, I need to give me a number, so that way like I put it in.
Well, the answer is no to proposal seventy-six. I mean, I I would propose seventy-five.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. Jared?
So the three cent proposal. Um, and I I would, you know, like, I I think we should revisit, and and with the caveat, I think we should revisit this. Around this next year, when we have a better sense of um. You know, the direction. You know, the direction that inflation is going to affect the budget, so.
Thank you, Jared. So I'm at, um, seventy-six, uh, for the two items that I mentioned. And yeah, we could like revisit it like halfway through a year, figure out where we're at and what decisions we need to make for the upcoming budget. Um, for the next, um, for FY twenty-four, okay? All right, Mr. Kamali, you have, um, direction from council. Um, can you please work on the resolution? So that we could have a read through and, um, and hopefully we're giving you enough flesh to be able to, um. Work with the traffic, uh, control and the resolutions that are coming to be able to supply as many as, um. As we need with the funding, you know, like with the, whatever funding we have available to get them done, okay? And, um, so council, um, we are going to be meeting on Tuesday. Just to get a read through of the resolution, okay?
Selena?
Yes.
Are you proposing that or are you saying that?
I'm, I'm proposing for us to do that. So that way, uh, for the May second, we could have an actual second reading, uh, to the document.
You mean May, May third?
I'm sorry, May third.
Okay, so you're, you're proposing, you're proposing that we convene briefly next week for, on Tuesday. April twenty-sixth, correct?
Correct. Just so we could do a read through of it, so that way we're clear on it, so that we, um, Melissa says May four. Um. May four, may the force be with you, uh, Jared.
No, 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 May fourth is a Wednesday.
Yeah, it's a fourth we're meeting. Because May third is a holiday, Jared.
It's a holiday.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Oops, okay.
That's so you are going to have a meeting on May second for the election. Cause I mean, to see on a Monday, May, on Monday, we need to like convene. So we have the story in of the new council member, right? And then how do you call it on the fourth, we have the meeting. But the way the council rules are is like you need to have seven days apart between one and the other, between the reading and. And, um, between the reading, if you change X amount of money and obviously like. Three cents away from the original budget is a lot more money than, uh, what the council rule state is like. Look, do you remember what it was? Was it fifty thousand or less than that, twenty thousand? It's like a, basically we gone over that number. So basically according to the rules, like we need to be able to have seven, um. Seven days, but it'll be quick with the resolution, right? With the new updated information and, uh, that way like is ready to, um. To put up for, uh, for a reading on the, um, on the fourth, okay?
I missed something. Why, why is May third a holiday?
Melissa, why is May third a holiday? May third is.
May third is Eid.
What is it?
Eid. I think they call it Edu Fete holiday, so it's also school is also closed.
So it is.
Isn't that holiday on the Monday?
No.
No, it's May third.
And why, why does that have to do with us? I missed, missed it.
Because, uh, we have decided that we will like respect, uh, certain holidays and that's a very holy holiday. It's kind of like having a meeting on Christmas Eve or Christmas Day. So that's the reason why. So it's a, it's a big deal. And we usually try to abide like if, um, if the school is closed for that day, it's that big of a deal, right? But I think that's the reason why, because also are the, a residents of various religions. Feel highly offended that we are having a meeting on a holy holiday. And it feel very excluded because we wouldn't be having it on Christmas Day, right? So therefore we, uh, the, the, it's actually, if you guys remember when we did, um. The calendar for the meetings, it was actually addressed there, uh, when we approved it. So you guys might not have remembered, but you guys all approve this calendar.
And my, my, my apologies, because it was my first year. I didn't, I didn't, I apologize for talking that, so.
Jimmy, is my holiday?
Yeah.
That's fine. I just, I just trying to understand. So we're talking about having on May fourth and so we're going to have a meeting on the twenty-sixth. And that'd be a short meeting because I have something also.
Very short, just read the, we just read the resolution so that way we could have a read of the resolution opening. So Mr. Kamali will pretty much read through it. And if you have any questions of the comment and that's about it, I'm now, I'm hoping this meeting is less than thirty minutes, it's just to read this item. And that's it. I'm not, I'm not adding anything else and well, my, my need to add something to you, but that'll be, um. That'd be, uh, you know, it'll be like one or two point and that's it. And then, uh, we'll have the meeting on the Monday to sworn in our new council member. And on the four will be the first, um. First meeting of the council, council member elected. Okay?
Which is a Wednesday.
Yeah. Okay, so council, is there anything else on this agenda in this point you want to address? Are you guys awake?
Yeah, can we just? It's the next item, adjournment, are we?
I believe so. That's the next point to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, you guys want to adjourn or recess? Just adjourn it. Um, motion to adjourn. Any seconds?
Seconded.
All right, seeing that there's multiple seconds, uh, there's no objection or abstention. Uh, this meeting has come to an end at ten thirty-one. I'm Mr. Kamali, Melissa, Jared, Pink Finance Office. Ron, thank you guys so much for.
And thank you for all the work you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
I imagine my opposition to this thing doesn't mean I don't appreciate all the work everybody's doing.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Thank you all staying here late.
Thank you. Thank you so, so much, everyone.
Thank you, council. Well.
Just want to say thank you, mayor and council. Thank you for all your support and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone. Bye.
All right, good night. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Jared and Pink.
You're like the whole team. Take care, guys. Bye.
All right, thank you, mayor.